This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for May 10th at about 6:01 PM. If we could stand and say the Fledgling Alleged, please.
The Fledgling Alleged to fly the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, everyone. Trying something a little new tonight. We're doing a hybrid meeting, and so Ed Gibson, our town administrator, is remoting in on a Zoom for us, and we'll conduct our meeting and call on Ed as we need to, especially as we get to some of the items that he's been dealing with. At this point, do we have any open time for the public? Robert? Yes?
Robert Floyd, College Highway, as town moderator. Rather than waiting through the meeting and not knowing when to announce this, some towns in the Commonwealth have been told by the Board of Health that they do not approve the meeting indoors, and their meeting this month outdoors, and I wondered what our Board of Health felt about our upcoming town meeting.
Have you reached out to the Board of Health?
It's not my position. No, I have not.
Okay. Board of Health just met this past week. Had that been discussed at all, Francine?
Not that in particular, but they did say that they would watch the numbers and they would, you know, at that point, make a decision about a mask recommendation. They didn't talk about inside versus outside yet.
Okay, because numbers are going up.
If they continue to grow, I'm sure they're going to come up with something.
Okay, so we're on the same page. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, and we'll have to follow up and see what their thoughts are on that, I think. Yeah, thank you. Hi, Janet.
Hi, Janet Kane, 83, Glendale Road. I just would like to encourage you to get the handicap accessible door fixed. It's been this way for months, and our seniors, especially with elections coming up, are not going to have good access.
Okay, good point. Thank you.
The part has been ordered for that door. It's just one of those supply line chain items.
Okay. Okay, noted. So we don't have any presentations tonight, no quarterly reports. We're going to skip over town administrator report. Does anybody have any key reports from Select Board? I'd like to really focus on the budget if we can, but...
No, I'm good.
Anybody have anything that they really would like to share from committee reports? Go ahead and do so. If there's anything important that you'd like to do? Joy, go ahead. Anything?
Just that bids for trail work are due next Monday for Manhattan Meadows.
Trail work?
Trail work.
Okay.
Yeah, for the bids, yeah. And that the Open Space Committee planning for the Hendrix donation of the Clark Family Homestead is on May 26th.
Okay, all right. We'll keep on announcing things as we get closer to those, too, but yeah, okay. Renee?
I just wanted to mention about the senior center feasibility building committee met, and they're meeting again, we're meeting again this week. The goal, we had a couple of guests from last meeting that were experts in design for senior centers and also engineer that did the Hadley and South Hadley senior centers. And so right now, the hope is, or goal is, that by mid to end of June, that be ready to request quotes, and also Attorney Kemp joined the committee meeting to clarify the final plan. And so the hope is that they'll be looking at lands and coming up with a plan, but the recommendation was to not limit yourself too much to the Route 10 corridor just because of the safety for seniors and major roads. I just want to also mention that the Public Safety Building Committee met yesterday. We've gone through all town-owned properties and have narrowed it down to three or four, and gone through publicly owned land and plan next week to narrow it down further so that, the hope is that by June 21st, that they would have a joint meeting with the Select Board proposing the lands that were requested in their charge.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So if that, they could be added to that.
Great, thanks. Sounds like both committees are moving along, so that's great. Great to hear. Wonderful. Anything else? Is that about it? Okay. Francine, anything else?
Yeah, I'll do a very abbreviated version. I'll leave out some details. Okay. The Board of Health is proposing that the town increase the directors' hours by three hours per week, bringing the position to a total of 35 hours a week. They've considered ways to conserve on the existing budget in order to cover this increase, which will be reported to the Select Board before the end of this fiscal year. It was reported that our town had 51 reported COVID cases last week, up from 13. It's likely that there will be more cases, that there are more cases that have not been recorded because of the use of home tests, and obviously cases with milder symptoms. They're watching the numbers and may consider a mask recommendation based on the course of the virus. At the end of April, the Board of Health earned $36,153 in fees and permits. Out of their estimated revenue of $39,000, they anticipate reaching the revenue goal by the end of this fiscal year. They discussed an increase in the Board of Health fee schedule, but I don't know the specifics at that time, at this time, because I had to leave the meeting. All right, very quickly with Norris. I'll start off with good news, that Norris received a notice of a one-time general appropriation from the state in the amount of $125,236 for pandemic-related enrollment loss. I don't know if the money is coming this year, this fiscal year, or next fiscal year. And then just the opposite, that was the good news. The bad news is, the IT Director, Kim Florrick, submitted her resignation at the end of the school year. She's taken another position with greater responsibility. She's done a lot, especially during this remote learning time, to increase the IT capacity of the entire district, and she'll be greatly missed. And then finally, another good news, the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee met yesterday, having to report that we now have four members. We were joined by Taylor Seabolt, and we're grateful for his willingness to join the ongoing effort. Thanks, that's it.
Could you just, John, you said that the money is, what, already?
Yep, the Division of Local Services already issued a bulletin. We shared that with Bradley, and the town administrator, $125,000 was already receded. It goes directly to the school without further appropriation, and the number represents, because the enrollment at Norris dropped by more than 10 students, our Chapter 70 receipts were reduced by the appropriate amount. And because in the next year, the enrollment went back up, instead of us being penalized for that year, they sent the chunk.
Kind of made your whole, basically?
Yeah, and we have till the end of 2023 to spend it.
Okay.
The end of 2023?
Oh, fiscal year 23, yeah.
Good. Okay. Anything else, John? Nothing in particular?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm just going to, just mention, just briefly, on the Grants Committee, thanks to the work with the folks at Ty &amp; Bond, we were able to, they were able to submit the MVP Action Grant by the deadline, and that is, mentioned before, is for a townwide culvert assessment. The amount of the grant request, I believe, is $106,000, thereabouts, and a $35,000 match is what's needed from a town, which we are planning on taking from ARPA, as this is a federal grant, we can use ARPA funds to do that. And then we are working, hopefully within the next day or two, we'll get the second part of the Mass Trails Grant for the Greenway submitted. That was mentioned, that there was an additional call for the spring, for the bikeway, and so this will total, a request of $500,000 for the bikeway, and we will have a portion of that that needs matching, which we'll talk about later on tonight, probably. Okay? And that's about it for grants. Thank you. All right. Okay, next, I think we have just one appointment. We have an appointment for Susan Seabolt for the COA Advisory Board, term to begin July 1st in 2022, and to expire June 30th, 2025. Susan is from Delisle Road in Southampton, way out there, where many people don't travel often. She has got a Master's in Environmental Policy from Tufts University, has taught, sorry, if I can read this.
She taught preschool.
Preschool, there we go, thank you. Preschool in Bethesda, Maryland, and an after-school program in a community center in Pittsburgh. Been a longtime volunteer and fundraiser for a garden club in Pennsylvania, and serve on a board of the Western Mass Master Gardener Association. And she couldn't be here tonight, she's actually traveling, but she sent an email, which I will read if I can find that. Hold on, two seconds here, I just had it. Hold on, hold on, there we go. Okay, so the email is, "I'm sending an email to outline the reasons why I would like to be part of the COA Board. The COA is an exciting and dynamic part of Southampton's community. I have experience volunteering for community-oriented programs, and I would like to share that with the COA. Second, I'm interested in physical fitness and hope to be involved in developing programs or activities that promote good health. And third, I think I can bring energy and enthusiasm to the council, and I look forward to working with the board members. Happy to answer any questions you may have." So that's Susan's information for us. And Janet, I know you're here from the COA Board, if you'd like to say a word. Have you had a chance to discuss this at your board meeting, et cetera, as well?
Yes, we did vote to Janet Kane, 83, Glendale. Did vote to recommend her to you, so I'd just first like to acknowledge that void that she will be filling is Lori Loisel, who will not be serving on the board after the end of June. Lori has been a dynamo for a number of years now, and will be sorely missed, and will leave a huge hole. Susan's energy will certainly fill that hole. We met her in pickleball. She joined the senior pickleball program a couple of years ago when she came to town, or a year ago, it's a blur. And between her, all her interests and her energy, I think she'd be a great fit for this group, so.
All right.
That's all, really, I had to say. Thanks.
Very good, thanks. Yep. Could I have a motion, please?
I move to appoint Susan Seabolt to the COA Board.
Second it. All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? All right. Thank you. Susan has been appointed. Very good. That is the only appointment that we have this evening, so we'll jump right into some new business. The first one we have is the Zipta barn roof, and what we have before us is the Fletcher Farm proposal to do the front roof replacement. If you recall, there is a lease agreement between the town and the Fletchers, and Concom, I believe, has already approved this. It was presented to Concom, and the Fletchers are actually going to be paying for this roofing themselves, and they just would like to have the approval, and Concom would ask the approval of the town, since we hold the lease to Fletchers, to go ahead and let them get going with this. So they have a quote here and a contract with Peak Roofing, Peak Performance Roofing, and that's what I know. I don't know, Ed, if you have any other information on that, or Joy from Concom, anything?
No, and Concom did approve this by the lease. It would also need the Select Board approval, but it is allowed by the lease. Peak has applied for the building permit, so it'll be done in accordance with all the codes and everything else, so I would also suggest or recommend that the Select Board approve this also.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion to that effect?
I'll move to, sorry, I wasn't there for the meeting. I'm still reading this part of it. To approve the deposit for the work to be done on the Zipta barn roof by Peak Performance.
And basically to allow Fletchers to go ahead and pursue the roofing replacement themselves?
And to allow Fletchers to pursue the repairs themselves.
Per their discussions already, and approval by Concom, I guess, so that's already happened. I'll second it. All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think the question in the letter asked, who takes out the permit?
I believe they, yeah, go ahead. Ed, go ahead.
The contractor has to take out the permit. I will have to sign it since the building is actually, the barn is actually owned by the town of Southampton, so I will be signing it as the property owner, but the contractor, Peak Roofing, is the one that takes out the permit.
In the town's name.
Yeah, in the town's name.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
And it's not subject to any of the bid rules because it's being paid for privately and not with town dollars, correct?
It is not subject to any of the Massachusetts procurement rules.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? All right, if not, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, so be it. That is approved, and Fletchers may begin your work with Peak Performance and get that roofing done, so go for it. All right. The next thing is the approval of the on-call engineering firms for contracts. This was done from the RFQ for on-call engineering services that went out in, I believe it was maybe March, and they were due in April. Ed, would you like to pick that up, or?
Sure. We had put out the request for qualifications for engineering firms for on-call engineering services. We had six firms respond. Christine Fowles, Randall Kemp, and myself reviewed those qualifications, and all of the firms either came back as advantageous or highly advantageous, so it is our recommendation to the Select Board that we, that the Select Board votes to issue contracts to all six of those firms that we would be able to enter into for engineering services for any projects over the next three years.
And just to read out the names, if I may, we have in our packets a note from Ed, so this lists out the engineering firms that had applied. Comprehensive Environmental Incorporated out of Bolton, Mass., Ty &amp; Bond out of Westfield, VHB out of Springfield, The Berkshire Design Group out of Northampton, Environmental Partners Group out of Quincy, Quincy, Mass. and Middletown, Connecticut, and GZA Geo-Environmental Incorporated out of Springfield. And just to say, this is for a wide range of services. This will include anything that we might want to do with culverts, stormwater, some park master planning possibility, the park splash pad idea, a wide variety of projects that these various firms have done, some sidewalk improvement, traffic safety, et cetera. So all of them have extensive experience, and I think by going with all of these, this will allow us to have not only a principal but possibly a backup. We don't know how booked up some of these people are, and this allows us to have some flexibility whenever there is a project that comes up through a grant or otherwise, that we can call on them and issue a statement of work and get going much, much quicker than having to go out and do the whole bidding process. Again, because this is the preliminary shortlist of qualified engineering firms to work with Southampton over the next couple of years. I think if I said that correctly. Any questions on that while we're?
So this is just the initial step, preliminary. We now have a shortlist, so if and when a project comes up and funding is identified, we can skip through the initial process and issue the specs to these individual six.
Right, you go right to the SOW? Correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, you go right to the SOW and allow them to then just go for the project? I mean, there's no other?
Correct. It actually shortens our timeline. We have had projects, you know, come up out of the blue that we didn't expect, so shall we say, this gives us the ability to work with these six firms in whatever, in those disciplines that were specified, and basically send them a scope of work and have them come back with a proposal, and we can get moving forward on the project rather than going back and starting the whole process from square one, with like an RFQ for each individual project.
Yeah, it certainly makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. A lot of towns have done this, actually, and I think we were good to join in on that notion of this on-call service. So again, they, you know, we may want one particular entity that's good on water and sewer, for example, but they may be busy, so we've got, you know, another firm that's also qualified that can be a possible backup in case that happens. So that's why we're actually recommending all of them. They put in some very extensive proposals. It was a lot of lengthy reading, but anyway, I think we got a few. We might have had a few more at one point in time, but this is what came to us. So they had the chance to apply, and these are the ones that responded to the RFQ. All right, so if no further discussion, could I have a motion to approve for Ed to enter into a contract with all six of these firms?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from the town administrator to award six individual contracts for on-call engineering services for a period of three years.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, thanks, Ed. You've got to go ahead on that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. All righty. Next, I believe we have some departmental transfers here.
I'll make a motion to approve, to start the discussion, but to approve the fiscal 2022 Number Two proposed budget transfers totaling $47,173.68.
I'll second it. All right. And some discussion?
Do you need to spell them out?
Yeah, we may as well explain what they are.
Police chief's salary is overdrawn by $185.72. The funding source is police wage account. And then winter road expenses are overdrawn by $46,987.96. The funding source is made up of two pieces within the same department. Winter road wages, $26,059.51, and general highway wages, $20,928.45.
And it's good that these are transfers within the same budgets as opposed from one department to another.
It is, yep. All right, so the total is $47,173.68 for the second set of transfers. Did I have a motion?
Motion and second already.
Motion and second. Go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Hearing no opposition, this is approved. Very good. Next. We have the FY 2021 Independent Audit Engagement Letter, and this, Ed, you want to take us through this, but this is basically for a one-year arrangement with Melanson, is that correct?
That is correct. So this would cover our fiscal year '21 financial audit.
Okay. And if you recall, last meeting, we transferred funds into this line to be able to cover it. I believe we transferred like $14,500, maybe, into our existing budget line in order to cover the costs that they had put out for this one-year contract. Could I have a question?
Correct.
And then we'll have discussion. For the discussion?
I'll move to approve the one-year contract.
To do the letter of engagement?
$36,000 for discussion purposes.
Okay, so letter of engagement, to enter into the letter of engagement, and I believe I would have to be the one to sign the letter of engagement, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So if you would add that, any motion?
And authorize Chris Fowles to sign on behalf of the town.
All right. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, now, open for discussion? Any questions, thoughts?
Not happy about it?
No, for real. Yep, so the fee is for $36,000 for this one-year contract.
Yep.
Okay, all right. If no further thoughts and discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, so we will get this engagement letter finalized and off to the auditors. Thank you.
And whoever's going to, because I see the senior page, whoever's going to send off that communication, whether it's Bradley who's here, or gets it to Ed and sends it to, whoever's going to communicate with Melanson that we signed this, could, in that same communication, ask for a date to be on-site, to get it scheduled?
Right.
And then update us on that.
Sounds good.
And then before, too much time elapses, and we're, you know, our backs against the wall and needing services, are we going to go out and get bids from other companies to see, you know, to make sure that we're certainly dealing with a competitive entity here? Because this is a huge jump from last year to this year.
I think we had talked about doing this for the one year, but then looking at opening up competition for a three-year contract that would include Melanson but not be exclusive to Melanson?
Right, limited to, correct.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yes. So I'm just suggesting that we get started on that sooner rather than wait till the last minute, because it all takes more time than we ever expect.
Okay, any other comment? No? All right.
I agree.
Work to get that done with Ed. Ed, how does this, is this just a letter of request for proposals that goes out to various audit firms, or how does this have to proceed procurement-wise?
No, it's not a simple letter. It's an involved process to do a request for a proposal.
It is, okay. Of course, nothing is simple.
It's not easy.
You were right on that regard. Okay. All righty, good. Well, let us move into, I think, our budget discussions, and especially, I think we should start with our wage scale adjustment that I know Bradley and Ed have been working on tirelessly, and I joined in on the mix a little bit this afternoon, which is why you have, I think I would say, almost forget some of the paperwork in front of you. You have the latest email from Bradley at about 4:00, and I'm to blame for that because I wanted to have a little bit more clarity in terms of free cash and what we were thinking about moving to ARPA, have that visible to us so that we knew what we were talking about today, so.
Can I just ask a question? This has to do with a couple of items down. Are we assuming that we have the same revenue estimates?
As far as I know, the revenue estimates have not changed, right? We are at $19,077,629.
Okay.
Yeah, we are using the same revenue estimates, as far as I know. Correct.
And a vote came in today, I guess, by the Senate around the increase in Chapter 70 and increase in circuit breaker and all that, but I didn't, I mean, that's far from done.
Yeah, yeah, there was some information that came through just recently from DLS about that, which will help with the Chapter 70.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same number of revenue.
Yeah, but our revenue figure here is going to stay the same, as far as I know. Yeah.
Well, for tonight's purposes, but by the end of the week, it will be adjusted upwards.
For tonight, we're at $19,000, yeah, right. So that's what we're trying to work against today. So, all right, so I guess, maybe Bradley, I'll let you, you and Ed, whomever. Ed, can you see Bradley's screen okay? Are you unsure what you see? Okay?
I see something very small that isn't legible.
Okay, well, we'll see how we can deal with this. So this is basically, I think we're going to focus a little bit on the FY column APAQ and AR, right in there, that bunch on the right-hand side, that look at the, we talked about the 18-year model last time, not going to a 24-year model to get to your maximum salary, but to go to an 18-year model. So I believe they've applied that and come up with suggested rates, the impact and the impact on our budget, so I will hush and let them take over the explanation. Whomever, between you, go ahead.
We have been given the direction of using that 18-year model and seeing where individuals in these positions would fall in comparison to their experience in their current position on those 18 steps. So I know you and Bradley made some changes to this today, so I might ask Bradley to go into more detail. I had not used the Sheet 1 Master Sheet, but had done it basically... done it basically by the grade tabs down below. So, let me see if I can open this up on, from the file that Bradley sent earlier.
Yep.
Because I can't read that at all.
Right.
So, let me just see. And you, you did receive a summary in the email that I had sent out.
Correct.
With this yesterday, just bringing out some different points in it.
Yeah.
And I won't, so.
When, when it's appropriate, Madam Chair, on, on those emails that came out with explanations on that, I, I would just like to hear more about the paragraph in the library, so I understand what he means there.
Exactly.
I think I know what he's trying to say, but.
Yeah. We'll, we'll get there. That one has popped out very interestingly, too.
Yeah, but John, I might not have known what I was trying to say.
I know, but.
Yeah. So, and like I say, I don't have the email in front of me, so I may miss some of the, the starting point, but.
We've got it.
But, yeah, but, you know, if you, if you, if that grade tab is, grade one tab is open there, I called your attention that there are some positions that have been put into these grades after the, that last study was done. So, I just called out the fact that, like, in that grade one, the COA van drivers and the custodian were not part of that original, shall we say, study. But, and, and the other thing is, that was my, one of my main recommendations was the fact that if you look at the far right of that, the last column says rate years after fiscal year '23, if one or above, it would mean that if the select board wanted to freeze people that were making above what this pay scale said they might fall at, anything that's one or above, that's the number of years it would take that person to become unfrozen. So, and my recommendation was to the select board that we look at this and say that anyone that may be making above what this analysis shows on an 18-year step scale, not be frozen, but receive a 2% COLA. There would not be any impact to the budget for that. The 2% COLAs are already in there, except for, I'll go back to that statement at the beginning on the FIRE EMS side. If those, if what the FIRE chief based those off of were fiscal, the fiscal year '22 wage rates, then yes, if we're giving 2% to COLAs to everyone, those would be subject to a 2% increase over what's in the budget.
If, if I could, just on that.
So.
Hold on, Ed.
What's that?
Just a sec. May I?
Go ahead.
So, my only pushback on that is in February-ish, this board approved a whole new wage study for FIRE EMS, which corrected the previous 2% and brought that in and then brought all the wages up to where you wanted it. So, I just want to be clear, we're only talking about adding a one-time 2% on FIRE EMS, like we're doing with, with the other non-CBA's, right?
With everybody else.
We're not, that number, because when I look at the number that just came out at four o'clock, it's a 15% increase in wages in that particular department. And I understand, so if I add in the $25,000 that we moved, right, that, that then makes it a 9% increase. So, I'm, I'm all for the two. I'm just, I just want to make sure we're not duplicating last year's numbers.
Yeah. I thought we had done something earlier this year to adjust those and make up for the fact that that 2% had not been.
That was the whole new scale that we did.
Right. I thought so, too.
I don't think it should be more than 2%.
It may not be reflected in here, though, in the, in the budget figures, right? It has it?
Well, it, it should be, because John should have at least calculated that on what was approved for fiscal year '22.
We could also make.
If that's, if that's what was done, and it sounds from his communication that he didn't add the 2% COLA for fiscal year '23, it should be 2% on top of whatever those dollar figures are.
That were, yeah.
Right. So, you take, you take last year's budget numbers, add the $25,000 that we moved to special town meaning, increase those numbers by 2%, not the nine that's in here.
Right.
Correct. I agree. And I think we also, back to your point about that position, I don't support freezing the position. I support giving a 2% COLA.
Right. Yeah. So, anyway, we'll, we'll come around to the FIRE back again, I think, as we get there. But just to be clear, so the, the, the column Z that we're seeing here, what are the, what are the ones, well, what are the ones in red versus the one above it that's not in red, Bradley? What are those rates for?
So, column Y, it's the proposed salary with a 2% increase.
Right.
So, we've taken the fiscal year '22 rates, times it by 1.02, and got those proposed rates.
Okay.
And we, with each employee, we looked at how many years they've worked. So, if they worked two years, as of July 1st, 2020.
In that position.
Yeah.
In that position.
Then we would increase the number of years to, so two to three, and go on to this little model we've made from one to 18.
Right.
We go bind three, and then we would put it in that column fiscal year '23 rate with 18-year model. So, we put that there. Then we compare it to that rate that was increased by 2%. If it is favorable, as in higher than the 2% raise, then that's a green, and we would take that as the proposed rate, well, suggested rate. If it was lower than their proposed rate, as in they're making more money than the budget is, the model is saying they should be making, it would be red, and we would go with their proposed rate with the 2% increase instead of the model. And that would be the people that would be frozen.
Mm-hmm. But they would at least get their 2%. Down on the, down on the bottom, on the one to 18, just to refresh my memory, on the gold thing there, that is the benchmark, right?
Yes. Once it surpasses the benchmark, each grade has a proposed minimum, a benchmark, and a maximum. So, minimum is the first year, maximum is supposed to be the 18th year. So, the benchmark is kind of the middle, but not exactly the middle. So, I just looked at each model and highlighted the one year that was the closest to the benchmark, which is usually the ninth year.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I think Ed was alluding to that last month, uh, last week, that it didn't exactly divide up half-half in even percentages. Okay.
So, so just to recap, if we just stick with the custodian, which is the bottom line, right, just to follow across. So, they were?
Their salary in '22 was $16.33 an hour.
Right. And then you put the 2% in, it gets you to the 16.
66.
66.
According to the model, they should be making $16.34. So, we don't want to reduce their.
You leave them.
Hourly rate. So, we're going to take the higher amount.
Yep.
Which is the fiscal year '22 plus the 2%.
Which is why making the, so for grade one, there is no adjustment other than the 2%?
Yes. And we've already budgeted for that 2%. So, there's no impact on our budget.
No impact on the budget in that particular category.
Okay.
One, the first position, right?
Well, actually, one COA van driver would have.
25 cents.
An impact, but the van drivers are paid through the Fritto grant, so there's no impact on the operating budget.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, grade.
You will see that that very first COA van driver would actually get a $125.96 increase.
For the year. Yeah.
For the year.
Yeah. Okay. So, let's, is it, let's go through these grade by grade, then? Is that it? So, grade two?
Yeah. I mean, look, could you take it all the way so I can see the left column, so I see the job title?
Yeah. Or maybe you can collapse a couple columns.
Can you collapse some of these? Yeah.
Yeah. Not the person, but the job title.
You want to see Q through?
Yeah.
AN.
Yeah.
Yep.
Q through ANs?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. You, you want to see the, yeah. Okay. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. All right. So, let's see what we have here. Do we have a, a mixture here, maybe? But go for it.
Yeah. This is mostly the library, and library made out pretty favorably with the model.
Yeah. And, and the, and the positions in this one that weren't in the original study would be the library substitutes and the CPC historian library. And Barbara had made the comment she doesn't know how the CPC historian librarian got into this grade, so.
What grade is that, Chief?
Grade two.
I feel the same way about the COA program director. He's a second in line in the department, and it's with administrative assistants. So, is that being rectified as far as a library historian, or no?
All I can say is this was not a part of the original study, so it did not belong in this grade two. It did not belong in that time at this grade two.
Right. And it's also grant-funded.
None of the, none of the positions that have been scored in the last three years have been scored to this grade level.
Scored to this what?
Grade level. So, the CPC historian is not part of.
They've been scored to what the PPPB has been using.
Right.
The second position on here, the administrative assistant to the COA, that position no longer exists.
Right. Now, go down. There were some footnotes there, Bradley, that we did this morning. Somewhere.
Yep.
Uh, or further down somewhere. I thought you changed the name.
This is, this is the position that the program director would be taking.
Right.
Right. Program coordinator. Right.
And so, where's it? Let me look at the salary.
We had the, I thought you had a note there for it somewhere.
I think I just changed the name somewhere.
Isn't it the volunteer coordinator?
There, right there. Okay. Yeah, it was there. Okay. It just didn't change on the other, somewhere where you had it. Right. Okay. That's the right title, at least. Okay.
It's, is it 15?
So, this is, so, explain this one, then, Bradley, or whatever you see there. Tell us what we're seeing.
The one that we adjusted this afternoon, where it had a wrong rate, and we went with $17.50, as in that was what we were posting as the hourly rate.
That's the minimum posting in the job description for the post?
What's the range?
I, I've only heard $17.50.
I believe it was $17.50 to $20.
That's our range. It's not the scoring of the PPPB, but the PPPB is higher than that, but that's, what we close to the job, up to 20.
But, but the, the job is, is, is open right now.
Right.
So, the, the assumption, I mean, we've got to put a number in for the budget.
Right.
So, the assumption is it's going to be somebody that's going to be in steps one through three, probably.
Wouldn't necessarily be the first step.
For, for, for budgeting purposes.
Right. Wouldn't necessarily be a first-step entry person, perhaps.
Correct.
Correct.
So, they're going to get $15.71?
No, 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 no.
17.50. And the green column is what's being proposed.
All right. 17.50.
But that is the low end of the.
Right.
Posting that's out there right now, which is 17.50 to 20, is my understanding.
So, what if we can't hire someone at 17.50? How much wiggle room we have? None.
So, if we look down on the, on the steps, where does?
So, if they're on.
Where does that fall on the steps below?
If they're on grade two, they would be $15.71, but they might not be grade two.
Yeah. Can you speak a little louder, Bradley? Can't hear you, sorry. And.
Maybe in the microphone, too.
Push the mic up a little bit. Yeah. So, 17.50 would be around step four-ish, or five? Five?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah. So, what's in here? I believe this was 10 hours with the notion that 70%, that's, that equals the request that was on the budget sheet from the COA, I think, that was 70% of the salary for a 14-hour-a-week position be paid through the town budget, and the 30% is paid from the grant, is what we understood. Is that correct?
So, a total of how many hours?
14.
14?
So, only 10 hours have been put into the central budget here. So, this reflects 10 hours of work, and there's four more hours that would be charged to the grant budget, is what I understand. Right? So, the question is whether, starting, if we have to start at the lowest level, we might find somebody at that level, but John's point of, if you budget for that level, then you're really out of luck. Do we not need to budget for a couple of steps higher than that, at least, to at least give us some wiggle room?
Yeah, there was a range.
With the candidate that comes in. I mean.
Yeah, there was a range there, and going somewhere between that and the maximum on the range would be fair, because.
Yeah, I agree. I think the assessive position's also open, and we're trying to recruit somebody who, and this is the second-in-command in the department, you know, theoretically or actually, this should be funded by the town. I mean, this is a second-in-command, and we're so underfunded and understaffed in the COA with the direction the town's going in. This, I think this is cutting ourselves off.
Yeah, that's a very, yeah. I agree with you, Randy.
So, what would we propose as a suggested rate, then? How would we figure that rate out?
Can you go back to what the, your 18-year list there, really?
So, the, the top, I believe, the way it's posted is up to 20. So, that would get it up to step 10. Is that right?
Just deleting this bottom.
My memory is it's up, that it's posted is up to $20.
Right.
So, what's the 1990? That's the benchmark?
That's the benchmark. That's surpassing the benchmark.
I would propose maybe doing, doing that. And then if somebody comes in who's more entry-level, or somebody's a good candidate but doesn't have a lot of experience in there, then I think that might be a savings, but, I mean, yeah, I'm here.
I would think either the eight or the nine would be more reasonable than 17.50, for sure.
I'm, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I just, my only feedback is that this is a change in precedence on how it's been done in the past, where, so as long as there's education that goes along with it, because I think any department head, they're going to see, oh, well, I was budgeted 1932, for example, therefore, I can just pay 1932 and I'm done. But in this particular case, because we're saying it's, it's an 18-step process, it, it's step one, unless you can justify, explain, and defend your position to whoever that department head reports up to.
Right.
And then I think it, it should come back through, so.
Yeah.
Whether it's PPPB or select board, you know.
I mean, in my, my experience, even though you put out a range for a position, you don't necessarily start somebody at the first step, the lowest step, when they come in, based on their experience, right?
Correct.
And/or education or work experience, whatever it may be. So, I think this would not, the way it is, doesn't allow maximum flexibility there to do. We don't know what's going to come at us in terms of candidates.
But I also think maybe, you know, if everyone's comfortable with putting in the 1932 for the eight as the placeholder, and then let's see where everything falls out.
Yeah.
I would support that. I would hate to have a perfect candidate step up and then not be able to give it to them because of, you know.
So.
One last thing, Chris. And we're, we're not there yet, but this is, what we're talking about right now is exactly why we're going to be in a problem when we get to the assistant in the town accountant's office. Because when, that's a new hire that came in, and the market dictated a higher wage, and I believe you're going to see that she's, in theory, frozen.
Assistant what?
Town accountant.
Accountant. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. So, just so that we can follow this as we go, let's take the 1932, put a little footnote, and plug that in, and see what the impact is there, if that, and put ourselves a little note with that. Will it do it? Okay. And then. So, maybe just make a little footnote to self.
About $950 more.
Right.
And, and the line above that, if we go to the left, can I see the job title again?
Admin assistant assessor.
For the assessor.
Admin assistant assessor.
Can I just ask a question of Janet? Janet, is there any change in the state formula grant amount for this year, based, because it's based on a dollar amount?
It's based on 2010. So, I don't know what next year's going to be.
Oh, they haven't said what the state formula grant amount is?
We don't, it could be months before, but usually. We haven't had, I mean, we know if I could change to twelve dollars per head, if they could change the dollar amount, we just have a contract with no dollar amount attached to it, right?
It was more wide open this year completely. I mean, there's hardly any justification that they are giving us here, yeah. Okay, so this got a bit more, so maybe just, just, I don't know, if you want to make a footnote and just note that that's not
It's a placeholder right now.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, so the impact then for that is around sixteen hundred dollars, so a little bit more and about nine hundred dollars more, seven, eight, nine?
And I would like to, the other one is the assessor, the administrative assistant for the assessor.
So current salary is?
Fifteen ninety.
Fifteen ninety. Proposed sixteen sixty-seven, and this is based on?
And so where is she at the spectrum of one to eighteen? Get down to the bottom?
So she'd be at three.
Yeah, this is a hard one, because we've got a person who's come back into this position, right? I mean, this would be
Actually into a new position, but has been in town for a long time.
Right.
And she used to be the assistant assessor.
She was the assistant assessor at one point in time.
Oh, really, I didn't know that.
So she was the assistant assessor at one point, so she's got more than three years' experience in town in this particular position.
In that office, in that department.
But, you know, left it and then has come back to it, so that's a tricky one too. Any thoughts there in terms of what could be a bit more?
How many, anybody know how many years in that office collectively?
I don't. Thirteen with the town, but that was not always the assessor's office, right? It was also town clerk office, right? Janet, we can't hear you, so if you want to come up and talk, that's why, I know.
Well, that's something I think we need to find out.
Maybe we could just verify how many, how many
Years.
Years in the assessor's office and see if that's, again, though, we want to, again, we to the extent that we're trying to do this per position rather than per individual, right?
Right, because the second step that's going to happen, right, this is a placeholder and the second step, we're going to keep, give all this to the Collins or the Dunhill Institute. And I expect there's going to be another adjustment in next year's budget where maybe this specific, I mean, because it is, I don't want to minimize anything, but, I mean, it is going from fifteen ninety to sixteen sixty-seven right now, which is what, it's seventy-seven cents?
Yeah, forty-five cents.
Forty-five.
Forty-five cents.
Well, forty, plus the two percent.
Yeah, so, yeah, right.
I thought the two percent was already in there.
Two percent is in the, in the green column.
Right, so if you take the sixteen sixty-seven minus the fifteen ninety and then you back out to two percent, the impact is forty-five cents.
Forty-five cents is the impact, yeah, yeah. But if, you know, if there were another three years, for example, I guess I'm wondering if, if we should just again, put that placeholder a little higher and assume that with the other hours, until we can check this, just to hold ourselves a little bit
Yeah, I just
With a little bit more leeway there.
I would just be nervous that, like, the COA, it's an open spot, I understand, I get that, I personally can justify that to myself, to anybody that asks me why I vote to support that. Adjusting a single person, not based on the years in the job, which everybody else is, but years in that office, I would then want to pause and say, okay, does that rule or exception apply to anybody else on this scale? And if so, we need to do the same there.
Yeah.
And perhaps that answer's already known and this is the only position, but
It's valid.
Would be my only pushback.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it needs to be equitable.
Yeah.
So you're raising a good point.
But I have a question, I think the substitutes in the library got, first of all, what, explain why the dark green versus the light green?
Dark green means that they weren't originally on the
On the scale, okay, for the, okay. So I think they were the ones that were along with volunteer coordinator in the COA, they were increased sequentially because of the minimum wage, right? So now the, so they went from thirteen fifty to fourteen twenty-five and now at least fifteen by the next budget, but it looks like their their level is, that's what their recommendation is, fifteen, because we're going to be at the minimum wage level by January of twenty twenty-three? Is that, is that?
Correct.
Is that the plan? Okay.
Yeah.
Then what were the other points that you made about the library department then, Ed, in your email?
You will, you start to see some of the library positions, including the fourth one down in this grade two, but they are what I'm going to call a super anomaly. So I, I can't say that they are underpaid because of a market adjustment, I can't say that they are underpaid because they, the scale that was established back in twenty seventeen is incorrect, I have no way to prove any of that, so my recommendation with, basically, I think it's either two or three of these positions is that rather than to bring them up to where they would actually fall on the eighteen year pay scale, is to cap each one of those at a twelve percent increase for fiscal year twenty-three and then look at these again, I mean, if it's correct, we might have to get there over a couple of years rather than in just one year, or we may find that, okay, maybe they were a super anomaly and were put in the wrong scales originally after we get that new classification and compensation plan back.
What percent does the five dollars and seventy-two cents an hour represent?
For the technician librarian?
Yeah.
So Bradley, the five, five dollars?
It seems like a pretty significant jump. What percent is that? You said twelve percent cap, so is that is that what you're recommending?
The twelve percent cap is what I am recommending here.
Right, but what is the five, five dollars and seventy-two cents, what percent does that represent?
Hey, Adam, let me see if I can see the column that that information's hidden in.
It's like twenty-four percent.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Isn't it twenty-four percent?
Seventeen up to twenty-three.
Yeah, I did twenty-three, seventy-six divided by seventeen sixty-nine and I got one point three four, so thirty-four percent increase.
Yeah, so I think maybe we should adjust down on that.
Yeah, there's three, there's three library positions that come up, that are representing thirty thousand of this fifty-four thousand dollar proposed adjustment.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that has to be a little bit more incremental.
Something whether these were not in the right grade to start with or something when, you know, not being on the, on the study at the time, right, so.
Even if they belong in a different grade, the numbers would still, I mean, potentially could be even higher.
Right.
I think, yeah, I think it'd be a tough scenario to jump up thirty-something percent in a position and then have the, you know, Collins study, whatever, come in and say, oh no, it's, then we're going to be in a freeze situation again.
I think if anything, this highlights which department, we just identify which department has been underfunded.
Yeah. COA and library.
One of those positions we just raised to sixteen an hour, remember, John?
Can you put the thing down?
The circulation desk librarian we raised to sixteen dollars an hour recently from fourteen fifty-seven, because she wasn't making very much more than the substitutes and she does, she does all that extra work.
But doesn't start till July one.
But the proposed salary here in column Y with the two percent, right, gets it at eighteen oh four, is that correct?
Seventeen seventeen.
Seventeen seventeen.
Yeah, I think that, I think the three positions that we need to look at, if we're going to do an adjustment, do it over a two-year period and then also, before we do year two, wait for the Collins to validate, is the senior tech circulation librarian within grade two and then the
Yeah, oh, that's the one I meant, sorry.
The youth librarian in grade four and then the
And then the library director.
In grade five.
Right.
So that number that's in there right now is like the thirty-ish percent increase, so we need to
Yeah.
Can you adjust those down Bradley to max, maximize their increase to only twelve percent? Or would it be ten percent since the two percent's already in there?
Yeah, two percent.
I was thinking twenty percent, I was thinking twelve percent over their current salary.
Right, so since the two's already
Just to be clear.
We just want a ten percent increase from their two percent number.
Right, so, and this, in this particular case, what's listed is the current salary is seventeen sixty-nine an hour, so it would be whatever twelve percent above that is.
Yep.
Nineteen eighty-one.
Nineteen eighty-one.
Yeah. I mean, that's still a twenty, twenty-five hundred dollar increase to that individual. I think that's a good fifth step effort.
So that was one of the positions, are we talking about the second circulation desk one or that's, we're in the seventeen?
We, I mean, we can repeat that when we get to those grades.
No, but that's the second one right there.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, but that's only a hundred and twenty dollars.
That's what Barbara was just talking about, right?
Yes.
The circulation desk librarian. So we're leaving that one alone? Okay.
Perfect, I'm fine with it.
Okay, but then back up to the assistant assessor, do we want to, what are we doing there? We're going to double check on the years and then figure out, I mean, if there were, for example, another three years as the assistant assessor in that position?
There isn't, she's been in the office two years, she'll be, this will be her third year.
Right.
No, but Ed, before she was town clerk, she was the assistant assessor. So we want to find out how many years she was in that position.
I don't think she was in it as assistant assessor and this is an assistant assessor, it's admin assistant assessor.
I understand.
Yeah, but she's had thirteen years employment in town, of which three might be now, so ten years previously of mixture between town clerk and the assessor's office, we just don't know how much, right? So, just as, you know, just to see again the impact, I mean, just to raise it another step or something, what would be the difference is my question.
Right.
If that were, the eighteen year model puts somebody there at sixteen sixty-seven. Where are we? So that's after three years. Yeah.
I'm being told she was the assistant assessor for eight years prior and then became town clerk.
Okay.
Eight years prior?
Yeah.
Wow.
For eight years, so eight and three would be eleven. But again, so, again, if, I know you're doing this for the exercise, but we would then just want to apply that same rule to everybody.
And we are talking about two different positions, admin versus assistant assessor, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that there is that acknowledgement of the number of years of experience there.
Couple of, so what, what are people comfortable with, just plugging in as at least the placeholder to hold the impact? Should we do like the benchmark or something, or?
Well, if you think it's eleven years in an equivalent position
Then you'd be at twenty-one.
It would be twenty-one eleven.
Which is a three thousand dollar impact.
People want to plug that in just to hold it there? Are you comfortable with that? I mean, we're trying to get to see what the actual impact is, we were down to like somewhere between forty-five and fifty thousand dollar impact for these wage adjustments at one point in time. So these may change slightly, but then see where we are. I mean, we can't really make any decisions on the ARPA or free cash or anything until we understand where we're going with the wages, right? So, until we know the impact on the whole budget.
We could, we can put it in now and we can always come back to it in thirty minutes.
Yeah, we can come back and modify, but I'd rather have it up there just so that we don't lose track of it and then. Okay, so the impact on that one Bradley is?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, okay, gotcha.
So.
So what about the position that, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
No, I'm sorry, I was just talking to myself.
What about the position that Barbara was talking about, the circulation desk librarian? That even though the current salary there says fourteen fifty-seven, you said it went up to how much?
Effective July first, though, of twenty twenty-three.
So we've already adjusted that, it's there, so we're actually saying a little bit, we're doing a little bit more with the seventeen seventeen, so.
Right, but, but I think when you're looking at the impact of the budget, the current library budget for that position is not budgeted at seventeen seventeen, I mean, I'm sorry. It's budgeted at sixteen sixty-sevens, so the impact is seventeen seventeen minus the sixteen sixty-seven. So it's not two dollars and thirty-one cents.
Correct.
It's less than that.
Right. So the current salary should be adjusted to the sixteen?
Well, no, you could, I mean, you can put it at the seventeen seventeen, but it's actually, it's not a hundred and twenty dollar impact.
Right, no, but the current, well, the current for, the current has been fourteen fifty-seven, we just raised it for proposed at sixteen over there, right? So the Y column would go from fourteen eighty-six to sixteen.
Right, so that fourteen eighty-six should be sixteen sixty-seven.
Right. Right, there you go.
And then the seventeen seventeen is what is computed based on the two percent increase and the
Correct.
The scale, yeah, the scale itself.
So the impact is not two dollars and thirty-one cents?
There you go.
Fifty cents. Okay. All right, any more on grade two that strike at you here that you'd like to talk about? So John, you'd mentioned the admin assistant treasurer maybe? Is that the one you were talking about or not?
Me?
When you mentioned the treasurer's office, it's not that position, this is the new, this is the new one to be recruited, no? Admin assistant? Am I right?
Correct. The temporary employee that was just hired?
Yeah. Or PCF'd, yes, the one we did.
Welcome to volunteer coordinator, says thirteen seventy-seven, shouldn't she, shouldn't the position be at fourteen twenty-five, minimum?
Yeah, the current salary, yeah, okay, for the volunteer coordinator? Everybody's at fourteen twenty-five right now.
Was anybody actually in that job?
Uh, yes, until June thirtieth.
Yeah. Chris? That is grant funded, by the way, the volunteer coordinator, so it doesn't Yeah, it has no impact in there at all.
Correct, yeah, that's why it's no impact.
Yeah, but just to get the right figures there that right? Should be already at the fourteen twenty-five, right?
About zero impact.
Fourteen twenty-five, wouldn't that be in the first column, Bradley?
No.
Yeah, current salary.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, current salary twenty-two.
That would be two percent of that.
Yeah. There you go.
So how many, how many hours is the admin, I'm sorry, it's not the admin. Yeah, the admin assistant treasurer, how many, how many hours are we putting in the budget? Are we leaving it at the thirty?
That was the one that they reduced, if she wanted to reduce.
That's what we wanted to.
Yeah, it's at the thirty.
Wasn't it the PCF for nineteen hours?
No, no, the PCF was for thirty hours, guys, we did an emergency appointment, didn't we? Twelve week emergency appointment or whatever.
Right, that was a little bit of the disconnect.
Yeah, so we've put that in for thirty hour position at this point in time.
Is it in there now as a thirty hour position?
The admin assistant treasurer, yeah.
It is, right, okay.
Yeah, it is. Yep. So it's in there now at that So it's in there now at that point, and we'll see where we go with that. But we had talked about reducing that to maybe 19, but then we've got to see whether we're able to do any adjustment for making a half-day Friday or not. If we've got the money to do that.
Actually, that proposal was based on a full day on Friday.
A full day Friday?
Yeah, not on a half-day.
For the treasurer collector's office? Okay. All right.
Correct.
We get to that one, we'll see. But right now, that is budgeted correctly at the 30 hours, right?
Yes.
Everybody agree? All right, shall we go to grade three?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, take your time and catch up, Bradley. We don't want to drive you crazy here too much.
There's only two positions in there?
Right, and this is to say both positions are frozen?
Correct.
So this is where, for the assistant accountant...
This is one of those ones we hired to market. Yeah, and the other thing, yeah, let's see. Yeah.
And the 2% that just reflects the 2%, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so this one, the current salary is already 1966. Applying the model, it would be 1785, right? So to get to the 25, you've taken the 1966 times a 2%, right?
Yep.
Correct. And in the case of these two positions, I would recommend their current salaries plus the 2%.
Yeah. But then it takes five years to move on that particular position?
If we were to freeze them, once they were frozen, it would actually take the assistant accountant five years to get to a point to earn an increase, and the assistant to the highway superintendent two.
Yeah, so again, I think giving them the 2% is appropriate, knowing that we're going to have an outside party reevaluate our entire scale and then there potentially will be an adjustment to market.
Okay. Okay, so that's just indicative right now. We're not actually saying that we are freezing everybody, but if we were to, you know, I mean, that's what this is showing, is the reality. If we follow this path, this is what this would mean. But I agree with you, we've got another study that's going to be coming along to help us figure this out better. Okay.
But they are getting the COLA.
Yes. They've got the 2%, both of those positions, correct. Okay, so no particular impact on the budget there at all, right?
Correct.
All right, grade four. Moving on.
Grade four, I think we need to do the 12% or the 10% to the youth librarian.
Current salary is 1962.
Yeah, I think you adjusted that.
With 2%, it would go to $21.01, but according to the scale, they should be making $32.38.
No.
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 That was an error that we copied over Barbara's hourly rate.
I have an old sheet.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, looking at this one, rather, well, the latest one that Bradley sent out.
2363 is an error?
No, that's the correct one.
2363.
I adjusted it today where 2363 is nine years.
That's the benchmark.
Eight years of experience, so they should be at nine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the benchmark. Okay. And so to get to the...
So wait.
So what's the 2197 then? What percent of increase is that?
That's actually a negative.
Is that the one we just adjusted on the other page? No?
No, it's not a negative because it's 1962 to 2197.
It's a 12% increase.
Yeah. Okay, so that is basically the 2 plus the 10? So that's already been figured in?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then the ones that are in red there, or pinkish, are already making above what the 18-year model projected, right? So what...
Correct. And then I got to call your attention to one other item, is that the assistant to the town administrator?
Yeah.
That's where she falls, but if I have to be consistent with what we've done with the librarians and whatever, I would say let's cap this increase for this year at 12% also.
So is that the 2038?
But that falls within the model.
That is the 2038. So my suggestion is to make that 2038 instead a 1892.
Is 1892 12%?
Yes.
12% of the current 1689?
Okay.
Granted, that's down around step one of that scale, but I think it's stepping in the right direction and gives us a chance to look at that with the new classification and compensation plan study.
And how long has she been with us already? Just two years or three years?
Uh, Judy, geez, that took three years.
Can you go back, the children's library again? So it's... That represents a... Okay, it's 2197. Okay, so from 1962 to 2197 is a 12% increase? So that's basically $2.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. And, okay.
Okay.
So those are both consistent at 12% changes in spite of them being a little bit different than the model, right? Okay. Yep, make sure we're... Got everybody changed here? All right. Then on the other three that are red, these are taking just the base times the 2%?
Yes.
Okay.
And the assistant treasurer collector is based on how many hours a week?
It's 30, 31?
31.
This would be based on...
31.
31 or 62 hours in a biweekly pay period.
Okay, so both... So all three positions in that department are full-time?
Yes. Currently.
Currently, yeah.
Yep, okay, so the...
Yes.
Yeah, right. So the impact for this grade total is $4,482 for those adjustments, okay? Somewhere, we'll get to the final thing. Okay, grade five.
Bradley, I'm sorry, do you mind just going back one and look at the water technician? I just want to see what was the final number there? Is that 29 or 20?
29. Currently making...
2922.
2922. This is a person who's been around for a long time though, too. Go back number of years. Don't we have this one?
It's got to be four years.
Yeah? Oh, I thought this was... I thought this was somebody else. This isn't Dennis?
Yep.
It is?
So that's off the...
It's only four years?
That's, you know, only 2%. Is that the...
Yep.
That's high for the scale, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, according to the scale, he's at step 17.
Right, so he's... Yeah, that's another one that's 11 years to move on this one. Yeah, so because the benchmark for this grade is what?
233.
Nine.
23, yeah, right. Well, that's the benchmark from the study, but from your model? Is it the same benchmark? Yeah, okay. 23, okay, all right.
Thank you.
So he's above benchmark, all right. Okay, grade five. Could you... I don't know that...
I can read the red.
That red is hard to read at all with that red background. Maybe just lighten it a shade? Just so it's readable?
Find a nice color.
I'll find a pretty color.
Yeah, light pink. Not to be confused with red frozen.
There you go, that's the better. At least something, okay. All right, so this is grade five. All right. So this is what you were talking about with library director and putting that at the 12% cap? And...
Yes.
Her current salary is 2519 times 1.12?
Okay, which one are we looking at?
Library director.
Library director, okay, so that's what that reflects, right?
No, this 2771, I'm not sure how we determine that. That's only a 10% increase.
So 2569 is times 12 should be how much? 12% should be proposed salary times 12%, right?
No, it should be current salary times 12%.
I'm sorry. Current, I'm sorry. Current salary times 12%, right?
Yes, so that would be 2821.
Maybe it got transposed because it's down on the next line.
Maybe.
Maybe it just got put in the wrong line.
It's not good. So town clerk. Do we know if there's anything weird about town clerk? Is it 2633?
Town clerk. Now, there was something in... Weren't there something in your notes on town clerk then?
Yeah, Ed, you did mention something in your email about that. Because that's what...
Yes, I did. And last year, we had noted that the town clerk was, shall we say, close, but not quite in that 10% off of the minimum that we were looking at. So I took another look at this and due to some comparison of, and I know it's an elected position, but comparison of what town clerks in similar-sized communities are being paid, I did a calculation on this and for what it was worth, that this particular position really was out of sorts with the market and put in, much like I did with the library positions, this 2821 would actually, shall we say, account for a 12% increase to that town clerk position.
Yeah, so that 2821 was right, Bradley, in both spots there.
So 2821 for both?
I don't know, so that's 12%.
Yeah, that was in his email, yeah. 2821 is what he was proposing in the email.
The calculation, yeah.
2523 times 1.12 is 2826.
2826, whatever, okay. But it's not 26, so yeah.
So should we put in 2826?
Here, why not?
That is a different scenario than we have been talking about thus far. Just to say, we haven't got out into the market, per se. We're basically making adjustments of 12% based on our chart and our system. So we just have to recognize that if we're going to do that, then we have to be consistent.
Why would we not just apply the same logic to that position that we're doing for everybody else? I mean, that person's been in that position for eight years, so the eight-year mark is $28.77.
But for the town clerk? No. In eight years? No.
Call him, he says, "term of service..." Oh, wait a minute.
No, no, no.
Not his town clerk.
Oh, all right, so that's a four.
Yeah.
So what does it come out if we just use the same system that we've been using for everybody else?
2556.
So that's where...
2633 for the next year.
The next year going in would be, yeah, 2633.
And that includes a 2% or no?
No, this is just off the model.
So if we use the model, would the 2% raise, what does it come out to?
Do you want a raise on the model?
I want to see what the comparison is of what you've already got up there and what the rest, what the model is as we've been doing it, everybody else.
Her 2% would have got her to 2573. The model's saying it should be 2633.
33.
So it's 2% plus 60 cents. Looks like a 2.3.
So the 2826 is the 12% on the current 2523, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
So...
I think we should stick to the system that we have.
But that is what we were doing, right? What's different?
No. It says he's adjusting this one special because we thought we were underpaid.
This is a special adjustment.
That adjustment right there that you're looking at that he has highlighted
Yeah.
is based on a marketing sample of similar-sized communities and what their town clerks are compensated on an hourly basis.
But I thought you said the 2523, current salary?
Yep.
Times 12%, like we were doing for...
Yeah, but if you apply, if you don't do the 12... You're correct, that's what you're seeing there.
Yeah.
But if you take the 2523 and you add 2% to that, you get 2573. Then you go to the scale and say, okay, what's that four years?
Right.
And I think it's...
That's the 2623. It's 2633.
Correct.
Going into year five.
Correct.
So then 2% on that, right?
2% on that.
The 2% is in there, in that 2633 number.
Oh. So if that were 2633 rather than 2826?
Well, the 2826 is when Ed, looking at the market in similar positions.
Well, then that same logic needs to be applied to the COA director then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be...
Well, I guess... Did you... Because it's the next line. Did you do the same thing for the treasurer? Did you only apply that to the two elected positions? How did you... How do we get 3580?
That was basically what we had talked about earlier of adding the $5,000 back in that was taken away when the current treasurer collector had started the position.
Okay.
To put it back to the market.
Right, so I guess what the process we've been using to get all the way up to grade five here, with the exception of the librarian positions, because it's too big of a jump to make in the open position in the COA to leave room to possibly retain, you know, attract somebody with experience, there's also a different set of rules being applied, but only to the two elected positions.
Correct.
Well, can we talk about the treasurer collector?
It appears that they've been penalized for being elected.
Yeah.
I just want to understand the treasurer collector because I do understand that there is a proposal to increase hours and also to restore the position to a previous salary level.
So the restoration to the previous salary level, I think, is being reflected here.
Correct.
But the new hours, excess hour, extra hours for Friday are not factored in here yet at all?
They are.
They are not.
No, this is just for 31 hours a week.
So then this red times 35.
And the reason why it has no impact to the budget? Because this is already in the, this is already in budget scenario one?
Correct.
Well, the previous salary was 20... Oh, current is 32?
32.
Okay, so five would be 37. Oh, it's 5,000, never mind, I get it, yeah. So that, the only change to this is basically to restore the $5,000 in there, but the same number of hours, and it does have a 2% increase in COLA?
Correct.
And that's what the 3580 is?
That's what that 3580 is.
Okay. But should we plan for an increase of hours?
Well, we need to see, we need to get through this and see what the impact is first and then go back and take a look. Because it would be not just... Because that, because it would be not just that position. It would be accountant as well, right?
Yep. And principal assessor.
No. What, what did you end up for, for an hourly rate for the library director?
Well, right now, it's at-
2821.
Okay, all right.
I think we should apply the same rules if, that we've been using for the town clerk or change both of them, but I just, I just not sure if people are in supportive of-
So, but that would be, would be to put in the 2633 rather than 28?
Yeah. I don't know.
I wasn't here at the time. Does anybody remember at the time that the reduction in salary was done in the treasurer's office, what were the hours that the former treasurer were doing? Was it still 31 hours?
It was still 31 hours.
Yeah. I mean, at 3580, you know, you're talking about somebody, at least on the scale, it's a 15-year employee who's going to max out. And three.
15-year employee?
According to the scale down below. If you, if you take that $35 wage.
Yeah.
So, you know, percentage-wise, it's 9.7%. So it's under the 10. It's not, you know, speak, relatively speaking-
Right.
As far as what we're doing on the library. And to Ed's point, I mean, this is, this is sitting in budget one already.
Right. Yeah. I mean, you know, it's real. We've got two elected employees, so we need to treat the two of them at least equitably.
But why do you take someone who's making the same amount and not increase the COA director? Because they're elected. I don't understand why elected makes a difference.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet.
I know. I'm just saying, why, why, why do you say, I just heard some, you know, they're both elected officials, so we have to treat them the same. I'm not sure why-
No, no, no. I was asking the thought process behind the people that put this together, Ed and Bradley, just when they got to the two elected positions, they utilized a different method.
Different method for those two.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, it's particular to those two, but it's different from the other, other employees. That's all we were trying to say, I think. But right now, by having the 2826 in there, that does not reflect then the 12%. So it's a recommendation of the 28 per hour, right?
Are you, are you back on the clerk?
Right, on the town clerk. Ed was recommending 2821. So with the math-
Correct.
2826. What I'm hearing y'all say is to stick with the model, which would be 2633 instead. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, not for me.
For the town clerk?
I'm just trying to understand the logic. I, I haven't formed my opinion.
I'm just pointing out that this is an exception to everything that's been done so far. So do we want to establish a rule for certain positions? I just want to be very careful because if we're going out into the marketplace and we didn't do it systematically through a study or a benchmark or call-in center or whatever, then we'd, you know, I don't, I just want to be consistent so that we don't put ourselves in jeopardy.
So is your recommendation to go with the 2633 instead and then take a look when the study, it's done, to see what that adjustment might be?
What percent increase is the 2523 to the 26?
2.3.
That's all? Wait, what? 2633, 2523. 4%?
Right.
So from current to there is 4%?
And where does the principal assessor stand?
Principal assessor currently stands at $60,000. No one has identified whether that's for 32 hours a week or 40 hours a week.
Well, I think the, the, what we heard from the finance committee is that it's a full-time position. It's a salary position.
Right. And, yeah, this, this rate doesn't, well, I did it based on 32 hours, but do it on four, on 40, because at 32, it's like $41,000. At 32 hours, at the rate of 2570, which you have there.
Which position are you talking about, Francine?
We're talking about the principal assessor.
All right.
So that, does that reflect $60,000?
No, not at all. Let me do a deal.
I mean, if you take the $60,000 and, and back out the number of hours or the dump, the, yeah.
Yeah, I'm doing-
Back into it to see what the hourly rate is, is what I'm trying to say.
It didn't really make any difference what the hourly rate for the principal assessor was because there's $60,000 sitting in the budget.
True.
2885 an hour. If it's a 40-hour position.
We're close, but that's still.
All right. So where are we with the town clerk? What are we doing with that one?
That's, if we're talking about 60,000, that's-
No, I'm talking about town clerk. I'm talking about, we're either 26 or, or the 28 that Ed recommends.
Okay.
If we want to hold it there as a position, as a placeholder and come back to it, we can do that too. But, reading?
I just want to understand. I'm kind of lost because I was still stuck on the principal assessor thing. His, I was just trying to understand Ed's comment that it doesn't matter what it is hourly because it's in the budget to 60,000, but I still think we have to come up with a wage scale here, right?
With a rate so you can compare it to the other positions.
Right. So what would it be if it was at 60,000? John, you, you said what it was, right?
Well, I just, I did 2,080 hours is 40 hours a week times 52 weeks.
And how often?
But I think they do, they add another day in here.
Yeah. I mean, we had not, we hadn't figured it in.
When they do the calculations, it's 52.1.
Okay, 52.
I thought it was 52.
No, it's not.
Well, whatever.
This would be a salary position, so it would be basically 52 weeks. There's no point, anything.
Okay, so 2, 2,080 hours a week, a year.
I mean, can we put that in there for the principal assessor position since the finance committee's in support of it and it's already in the budget? I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure why we're putting it at the level that it's at.
And on the main page, we've already got the 60,000 budgeted in there, is, right?
That's not reflected in this rate.
Yeah, the rate may not be.
So does anybody, anybody else in town hall work 40 hours? Or is it expected that people on salary are 40 hours?
Not necessarily.
Because I thought most of their schedules were seven-and-a-half-hour days.
Yeah, they are.
So then I would, full-time is seven-and-a-half times five, which is only 37-and-a-half hours.
Right.
Yeah.
So 37-and-a-half hours times 52 weeks is, I can't do that in my head.
Yeah, it would actually be higher than.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not 40 hours. Yeah. So you want to do that times what? Times?
No, I did the 60,000 divided by 26 pay periods.
Yeah.
And then-
That comes out to $38 an hour if you do the 26 pay periods?
If I did 60-hour week, bi-weekly, so 30 hours a week. So do you want 37?
37 and a half.
I get 3722.
So it'll be 75 hours bi-weekly. $30.77.
We just want to place that there, even though it-
I think so, just because I think we need to see where this lands at the end.
So, yeah.
Right, but it, it would have a zero impact on the budget because we already have 60,000 sitting in there.
Yeah, it's just the indicative rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happened here?
Were there two lines in that red for principal assessor?
Yeah, I think there was a vacant position that we just left blank.
Oh, okay. All right. So that's where we are there. Okay, so now, if I'm understanding again, these other positions, town accountant, health director, building commissioner. So these are taking the proposed and doing a 2%, the proposed is with a 2% increase because they're currently making over the benchmark model.
Bradley, can I see the position? Thank you.
Except for-
Right.
So treasurer-collector, principal assessor, town accountant, health director-
Building commissioner.
Okay. And then the COA director lands at 2633, and that is what percent increase?
COA director to 2457 to 2633.
Yeah, current salary to the-
7% increase.
7%? And on the benchmark? So, yeah, okay. So the benchmark for that one?
2924.
29.
So what year is she in?
One to four.
Yeah. Onto five.
Or five?
She's in year five?
Four years. Starting next year, she'll be five.
So that's the level it comes up to, 2633?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's a salaried position. That's not hourly, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think right now, all the department heads, with the exception of the health director, are salary positions. I think that maybe she'd come up to the board of health, Francine.
Yeah. I, I brought it up. Okay. Is there, is there another department head though that's also hourly?
No.
Barbara, the library director.
No.
At least on the-
No, Barbara is salaried.
Yeah.
Yep.
Originally was hourly on this sheet and then we changed it.
Yeah, no, I got corrected. It was a mistake.
All right.
Can I just hear what are the hours that those department heads make? I mean, work?
Yeah.
Is it based, what hours is it based on? Is there a list there somewhere?
Yeah. So 31, 30 is me.
So they're all?
They're all.
26, and then they're all 30 to 32, and then library director, 35?
Yeah.
Well, last year, the COA director got a significant raise as part of the lower amount, but I really think, you know, going forward, she continued to raise up the department heads. Last year, we raised up some of the lowest paid, and I support going up on the department heads for sure. But I know that position was raised up 20% last year, so.
So this reflects our, our 12% above the current, current salary. Is that right? For the COA director? The 2633?
From the previous year?
Reflects current at 24.
I think-
No, I think this just falls where it would on the salary scale.
Yeah.
It's on, yeah.
Yeah.
So she gets the 2% plus another 5%.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right. All right. So there, too, when you look at the right-hand column, we've got treasurer-collector, seven years to maybe be held, right? Five years on the assessor, 11 years on the accountant, and 11 years on the building commissioner before they would get above their benchmark. I mean, until the, rather, until the scale catches up with them. They're already above, right? Is that correct?
And I'm also counting on the study to actually be even further. We may be relooking at it in a different way, too.
So we, we just know that, I mean, that's, that's outlandish, obviously. Nobody would support that. So hopefully, a study would, will help us adjust that reality. I mean, that's what it's showing us, but it's, you can't possibly expect anybody to, to want to, want to be here when it's going to take you that long to move.
Right.
Right? So, so this is a tricky grade in general, all right? And then-
Absolutely.
Last grade? Yeah. Okay. And the biggest, the only impact here, right? Okay, let's see what we did, though. So people are already, with the exception of one, are already above their benchmark?
And the, and the proposed 2023 rates for these people that have employment agreements, they're all in line with those agreements, right?
Correct.
Yeah, this reflects the new contracts and so forth. Okay. So.
We have the-
Okay, so the grand finale?
I guess what I, I don't want to be locked into until we arrive at some final numbers that because it's in the budget, we should spend it. So I want to be careful what it is that we put in the budget.
Right.
That's an argument that's come back to-
And we know on the, the first one, we have not, we haven't nailed down exactly on the highway superintendent.
I didn't, can I just hear what Francine just-
Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I just, I just said, you know, we've been in situations before where we don't nail down the number. We put it in, in the budget, and then because it's in the budget, people assume that we have to spend it, rather than being a little more realistic, maybe not as much in the budget.
Yeah.
But these should reflect the contractual increases and things that we've just done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that if there are people that are hired with less experience, then obviously you would, you would not just automatically bring someone at the same level.
Correct.
Right.
So I think it's great that there's a scale.
Yeah. All right. So this is one where we're still, we don't know the exact rate on the, the first, the first line. We're in the middle of negotiating, right, on, on the highway super.
Correct. We've had some informal talks but haven't finished it off. Hopefully, we would have done that tonight if I was there, so.
So what's the impact?
So what's the total impact on all of those so far?
Let me just make sure.
Make sure we got everybody added in there. If we were to do that, what does it mean?
So we have, total is 364880, but then we're going to add $700 for election workers that aren't in this model at all. So 3934880.
Why aren't election workers, this is not the first year that they were on the operating budget? How come they're not in there? And they wanted the minimum wage. Oh, I know. They were not increased the minimum wage.
Because they don't, they aren't, weren't anywhere on the scale because originally they were paid, yeah, they were paid as vendors rather than employees.
Right.
Right.
So right now, all of these things that we've been discussing is around a $39,000 impact, $39,003 impact. And then we wanted to take a look at what it would mean if we were to consider the Friday work schedule for the finance team, which I think Bradley tried to figure out, but maybe we only did-
A half of the-
Half-days, right, for treasurer-collector and accountant and assessor. And I think, Ed, you were saying, though, for the treasurer-collector, that one is, the desire is full day rather than half-day.
Correct. That was, that was, that was what that proposal was for, to reduce that admin clerk's position to 19 hours and the $10,000. I don't, I don't know if a half-day is actually advantageous to the treasurer-collector as far as her other work duties go for other towns.
So I just want to state this for, for the record, I guess. We have hourly employees, we have salary employees, and we have elected officials. An elected official is required to show up one day a year, period. So-
Correct.
It doesn't matter the hours. It matters the amount of money. It's how much money is it going to take to keep, much like on the assessor's case, although in that case, we did backwards. We said, we need 60,000. How many hours are we willing to accept? And, you know, the 37-and-a-half hours. So if- So if, if the argument or the drive is to get to a dollar amount, then, you know, what is that number, and either we get there or not? I don't really think, it doesn't matter how many hours that, any elected official has, because...
They can do the job in 10 hours?
If they show up on one day, you're required to pay them by statute for the whole year. Both our elected officials, our accountants, they show up, they have a greater work ethic, I don't want that confused, but I don't want to be talking about hours on those two positions, because at some point, somebody else may get elected at those spots if they remain elected, and we can't go change, well, now we want to make this 37 hours or 20 hours, or whatever the case is.
Correct.
It's, this is a dollar amount, you do what you have to do to get the job done.
Unless, until we go to appointed or...
And then that brings in the hourly discussion, and this is appointed, and this is what needs to be done, and that. I'm all for opening the building, but I don't even think that's the proposal right now. It's allowing key members of the finance, internal finance team to come into the building on a Friday, while it's still close to the public, so that they can work uninterrupted to get their work done.
Correct. And do those, get the key functions in their positions done in a timely manner.
So, as far as the treasurer goes, it's the same process that was used, which probably can't be answered tonight, that was used on the town clerk, is what communities of a similar size, what are they compensating their treasurer slash collector, and is the job broken in two? I use there a separate collector versus treasurer? And what does that look like? And where, where are we in that scale? And adjust according to that. As far as the town accountant, and we've already addressed the assessor, right, so it's only the town accountant that we're talking about hours-wise for Friday, correct? On that finance team, Chris?
Well, it would also be the treasurer collector and the town accountant.
Yeah, but treasurer collector's elected, right? So we just, you know, what does that position pay for a similar community? Much like you did the exercise on the town clerk, it comes up with X amount of money. Well, that's the number. Whether or not we can support that is a different argument.
Yeah, it's a different argument.
But the town accountant, we do compensate him on, you're gonna do X number of hours salaried, this is what it is, and his contract is on a four-day work week, so if we're gonna go to the five, yes.
Build that in.
We need to build that in.
Yeah.
And the assessor's already been addressed.
Right.
So why isn't the difference 13,000 something or 14,000? If the principal assess has already been addressed?
Yeah, we could take that out if you wanted to, I guess.
So is the 14 in addition to the 39, is that where we stand right now?
And, and just, just one note on those positions, those are all salaried positions, so the multiplication would be 52, not 52.2.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. So, where's the treasurer collector? I'm trying to see what we have budgeted already, yeah?
Yeah, basically, all of the salaried positions are figured at that salaried amount and divided by the 26 pay weeks and divided up that way.
Does it come out the same, Bradley?
What do you mean?
You just did it by 52?
Yeah.
Except for the principal assessor, the principal assessor needs to be 52.
We're not including that one, because we've already addressed it.
So, I mean, right now, we've got an amount budgeted.
So the 39 plus the 14.
Right, so looking at 53.
And with these three positions, our principal assess, we don't have one yet, we're assuming it's going to be, you know, what, how many hours? It's salary, but we're assuming it's gonna be a half-day on Friday. Treasurer wasn't that requested as full-time, and...
Yeah.
Do we know that the town accountant wants to work an extra four hours on Friday?
Yeah, I mean, the treasurer collector, apparently, that only reflects the half-day, it does not reflect the seven and a, seven and a half hours.
Put an eight.
Right?
I mean, is that what, what is hoped, or proposed, or agreed by the finance committee? That it be an eight-hour or full-time 40?
Would be seven and a half hours, right? Is that, that's your actual work day, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that jumped it quite a bit.
Yeah, so that, that ends up being a $19,000 increase for that one particular position.
Right. And that even takes it up over the wish list budget?
Yep.
For that position, I believe. Current, current is around, or what's being proposed this year is 57, I believe.
Well, can we keep it, can we keep it, all of them at the four? Weekly impact four?
I mean, if we budgeted in at four, but then the person, I mean, all that would do would be to say, okay, this is your flat salary.
Right.
Whether you take Friday or...
We don't tie hours to it.
Right.
We don't tie, it's 50, whatever it is, it's, this, this is the number you get, the job needs to get done.
Yeah.
If you, because in reality, if they become, if they have abilities to be more efficient, either one of those elected positions, they, they can still get that salary, and they can be down to three days a week, and they still keep, can keep positions in other communities.
Right.
But from our standpoint, it certainly changes things by quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we can afford...
I think we have to be incremental about it.
Seven and a half hours worth of it.
Right.
I mean, four hours is maybe a little bit palatable, but...
I think we should base them all on that four-hour amount.
Yeah.
At least for now.
Yeah.
Could we shut that window?
Yeah.
I think it brings it closer to, I think it's 14, 177, I think. Yeah.
Yeah. So that would cover three of them, budgeted-wise, for an extra four hours on Fridays, right? So, yep, so the 14 plus the 39 or something there? Yeah? So we're at around $53,000 or $54,000 impact?
39 and 14, yep.
Total on that? Yeah, 39. Plug that in there, get the real number. 53, 5, 26. So, if that's what we need to make adjustments in the sal, in the wages, we need to then go back now into the budget and take a look at, I mean, see if we're comfortable with this, but we need to go back in here and figure out what we don't want to pull out from our, what we do want to maybe take for free cash, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Where do the, where does this stand right now?
So right now, we were 10,000 ahead, I think, at one point. Oh, we still are, oh, good. We still are. We still are.
That should come close to paying for the 2% for the fire EMS.
Say what? Sorry, 2% for the fire EMS? Yeah, that isn't figured in there, so we gotta go back?
That $10,000 should come close to paying what the 2% would be for the fire EMS wages.
Okay, so should we go back up and plug in the, up on the fire, fire, is, 2% on each of the fire and the EMS wage lines, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's, that's what we, the select board wants to do, and, you know...
Yeah, is that what?
2% were added to everybody else, yes, that would make sense.
Then, then I need, I need an expert, I need to understand why those wages are already 9% over previous year. And especially if they don't include the 2%. So now we're going, we're giving them an 11% increase after we just went through an exercise and we capped others at 10, so I don't understand that.
We capped them at 12, I thought.
Yeah, the 10 plus the 2.
Yep.
But if, I'm being told that the 2% is not in the original fire department budget, and that already represents a 9% increase.
So what's in his, his request down below? Is there a, is it explained there?
I guess I need to understand why it wasn't in the original request.
I mean, why?
Yeah, why wasn't it in the original request?
Why wasn't it in the budget request that came in?
And that's what happened last year.
Yeah, that would have been their direction. Not, not to include any COLA that that would be decided on by the select board and the finance committee.
But it's, it's in every other tab.
Every other department.
Every other department has that 2% in there.
Because I added it to every other department.
So...
Yeah, so why?
Well, then, I get, I guess, why is, why is his wage items going up 9%?
Fair question, I guess. Might be the mix of individuals he figures he needs on staffing.
Wasn't this the calculation we had of 30, 70, of 70 going to EMT and 30 going to fire?
Yeah, but if you add the two together, Bradley, it's 520,000. That 2022 budget cumulative is 452, and if you add in the 25,000 that we did at a special town meeting, gives them the 477. Difference between 477 and 520 is what, $43,000?
33.
And what percentage is that?
9.02.
Yeah, I pretty much think that we should just take what the increases were from the special town meeting and then add 2%.
Well, don't forget the increases in the special town meeting for, basically for half a year.
Yeah. But this is also the only department head that, on their own, can do mid-year adjustments and give out raises without coming back on anything. So if, the only way to prevent that is not to overload the budget. If we put the money in there, that's the only department that remains unchecked.
It comes back to my point, if it's in the budget, then people feel the...
What do you mean it is unchecked, John? What do you mean?
Under this town's interpretation of a strong chief...
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Once the money's in there, which is why, previous year, when the 2% wasn't there, he did the adjustments, and they just went through under his signature.
Right, right, right.
They didn't have to go through PPP or back to the select board, because there was money in the budget to do it.
Right, right.
So technically, any change in wages has to be approved by the select board.
Okay, so, but back to what we thought we did a few months ago. We're pretty sure we did not make up for this lack of 2%. We did at that time, but we have not put in the 2% for '23, is what you're saying here?
That would be correct.
Then why is it a 9%?
Right.
I don't understand.
I don't understand it either.
Yeah, can, can you explain that better, Ed? I mean, why, we're...
Let's look at the line items, what he put in.
No, the, the chief would have to explain that better.
So I mean, if we want, if we want to make sure the 2% is there, we can take the 2022 numbers, again...
Current 2022 numbers.
22 numbers.
The current one.
Well, I'm just, I'm going off this sheet here, right?
This is just the budget, it's not the current number.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the only, the difference between the two is these two numbers plus the $25,000 from special town meeting, right?
Right.
So if we take the two numbers here and we add in the 25...
Yep.
Right, that puts us at 477,000, up, round it. Multiply that by, you know, 1.02, and then there's his number, but it's not gonna be the 520 that he has sitting in there right now. That comes up to 487 and change. And right now, it's budgeted for 520.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna take it all back here pretty soon, the raise.
And we've accounted for the switch between the 70, 30 paramedic versus EMS, or basic, rather?
Yes, that change was made by Bradley, after the chief approved it.
Flag that line, then.
I mean, we may have to come back to that and just verify that again? I mean, I don't know, I was hoping we could not have to look at this again, but we may have to. I mean, what is, what is the question we really want to ask and get clear?
Is justify the 9% increase? If, especially if that 9% does not count, include a 2% COLA.
Right.
Because 7, 5%, 7, I could see that based on the wage scale adjustments we did.
Right.
But without any, again, it's, without the supporting documents, at least in front of me, that, you know, they may exist somewhere, we're, it appears that we're adding $33,000 in wages to this line item, which frankly, is enough to right the ship for everybody else in town hall.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we have to get that clarified, otherwise...
All right, so we need to put an asterisk or something here that we need to...
Yeah, 2% off of the numbers that are in there is like 10, 4.
10, 4, John just said 47, yeah, right.
10,400.
477, yep, 10.
So we're gonna come back to that and figure that out, is that right?
But for the folks that have been working on this document, I mean, this is, John hasn't been working on this document or chief workman, so can either of you explain why the number is where it is? Ed or Bradley?
I just remember we had a total...
That was the numbers he had put in for needing for this year to run the ambulance service for 2023.
And then we had readjusted the 70, 30% split.
So then fire should have been reduced.
And I thought it was a little high myself, and that's one of the reasons I had held up at just automatically adding the 2% to it.
Okay, well, it should be 2% on what was voted at town meeting for the budget.
Yeah. All right, so just maybe put in parentheses or question marks, 2%, should be 2%, whatever was, 2% plus...
We should come up with a figure, just because...
What was voted at town meeting?
We're gonna, we have to try to figure out where we are at the end of the night here.
I know.
I think we should probably put in the figure of 2% from current wages that were increased by $25,000 not long ago, and see where we land. Otherwise, it's gonna be hard to know what, you know, to kind of shift ARPA, free cash, or anything else.
Well, or we can, yeah. But if we don't think we're leaning in the direction of moving there to actually adjust these, I mean, I see what you're saying in terms of a placeholder, but it would be interesting to see what we can do without this, and then...
Bradley, I think you're going in a different direction here.
Yeah, it should be 8, 487.
487, what are we doing?
So... Right. The number, the number he has in the budget right now in your AP column, Bradley, is overstated.
Oh, okay.
So if we take, you know, one of the issues here is, you did exactly what we asked you to do, the number in the green column is a 30, 70 split, the number in the orange column is a, is almost a 50, 50 split. So you almost have to go off to the side and take last year's number, the 231 plus the 220, and then add $25,000 to that, that came out of the special town meeting, and that gives you his ending budget number for 2022.
Plus line 20, 102, the 220,000.
95 plus 102 plus 25,000.
Yep. Right, and then increase that by 2%. And now, and now if you take that 487 and put 30% of it in your 156 number, and 70% where your 364 number is.
I gotta play devil's advocate. If you started with $433,000 and added $25,000 for half a year, wouldn't you add $50,000 for full year?
You could, if the money was sitting in the ambulance receipts.
That doesn't point it, though.
So that actually lowers what we had in the budget.
Right, $33,000.
Right. I don't know. All right, do we want to, yeah, we're plugging those figures in for now into the, into column AP?
So you want the 341, the 146, 175?
I guess, that's what we're saying.
Replace the 156 with 146.
I think the point that Ed just made, though, was very valid. If the $25,000 increase in the wage line was only from January 1 to June 30, that doesn't really account for the whole needs for the whole year.
No, it doesn't.
It's a valid point.
So put in another 25,000.
Yeah.
Well, yes, but, you know, again, with, you know, failure to produce documents to support your request than just plugging a number in is what's causing this discussion now. Because he's also stood before us multiple times and said, "The $25,000 is more than what I need for six months, so some money's going to come back." So I concede the point. I don't think it's an even, you know, 25-25.
We don't know how that was split out.
And what was the, I mean, the warrant was written in such a way that the voters approved it. So what was actually, how was it worded to, for the increase? Was it an increase of $25,000 for the budget?
EMS wages.
EMS wages. It wasn't FIRE, I don't believe. Right.
Because it came out of ambulance receipts.
Yeah, it was just EMS.
It was just EMS?
I think so. I mean, that's, I don't know, without looking at the warrant from a year ago.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm just trying to, you know, like...
Isn't that right, Ed? This was really to adjust the EMS wages, not FIRE wages last year when we added the...
Well, no, the 2%, you know, in my mind, if he's looking for the 2% added, it goes to both.
Right, but the $25,000 that we did at special town meeting was focused primarily on EMS, was it not?
Correct, but still, if you had six months of $25,000 into EMS rather than both, you'd, you know, one would conclude, and John's right, you know, he said it might be more than he needed, you know, that a full year would be a need of close to $50,000.
Okay. So shall we build in 50,000 on the EMS just to see what that does, then?
Well, we already, 25,000 is already in there.
Right.
Right, right, another 25 is what I meant.
So...
And do we want to get to reality of what...
2% is already in the number, Bradley, right, Bradley did. So if you want, if you want to throw an extra 20 or an extra 25 into the EMS line only on top of that number that's in there, I mean, there's still a $7,000 savings.
Yeah.
How much?
About $7,000.
$133.
Well, because you just put 25 back in.
I know, I know. There are any other places.
All right. So...
And then I don't know how close or how tight it runs on your FICA payments, but if we're entertaining $54,000, we should add at least $800 or $900 to the FICA line item to cover the payroll tax.
Fine. Good point.
So... So that 25, we need another 25 there? Or is it, what have you put in there?
He's got it in there, the 341.
25 plus 2%.
Right, but then if we're saying another 25 to get the full year?
He did, the budget, the number in the budget's 366.
Okay. All right, so just make a note that that's full year. Yeah. Yeah, okay, got it. You know what you're talking about. Fine. 25,000 times, times 2-ish, whatever. Okay. All right, so then what does that do to our budget in terms of our totals? Oh, gee, even better.
Overfunk, over...
Even better.
Even worse.
No, we're 18,000 in the bed.
Did you correct the math, the signs?
Yeah. We were 10,000 ahead last time before we just...
But ahead there means that we were, at least the other budgets we looked at, means that we're...
Revenue is over the expenses.
Yeah, revenue over expenses, 18,000. All right, so what we were trying to get, we were trying to get it around the 54, say 55 to round it up, based on John's comment, roughly 55 on the, on the wage adjustments, if we went with that, right? All right, we've got almost 19 to go. So let's see, go back up on, or maybe, is it, let's see.
Can I just ask, has anything been taken out of the budget yet?
No.
So nothing's been proposed to ARPA, anything?
The only item that was taken out was the MS4 funding.
Right.
And if it doesn't get put back in, we just got to make sure that it gets funded by free cash or ARPA.
Right. So this, we're just pulling up a page that had the reductions and the possible ARPA and free cash. This is what we worked on a little bit today. So the town hall copier, we, we thought we could re, we could put that at 1,000.
Save 1,000 by doing the five-year lease on it.
If we make that adjustment, maybe, can you pull both of them up together? Maybe not, I don't know.
It would just be very small.
Yeah, might, might be. I don't know what's easier for you to do. So that knocks it down to 36.
35.
Right.
Do that?
Yeah. I think we want to, we want to apply these, I mean...
Yeah.
I think we want to apply the reductions, right? And see, we know that we can manage those from what we thought, or that's where we thought we could save some money. The tricky one is going to be on the next one, but go ahead.
So I'm going to leave the second column panel.
Yeah, that's fine. Just put it in the AP column, that's fine.
Yep.
All right, and then... Go back to there again, and then let's, let's slip, I don't know, let's skip the charge or collector for a second and do these other couple ones. So veterans' benefits, Ed, you told us last time that that could be reduced from 25 to 20, I believe, because a couple people were not eligible as they had thought?
Correct. There was a couple of individuals that were applying, but as it turned out, they were not financially eligible.
Okay, so we can reduce veterans' benefits down to 5. 25, 20, sorry, 20. Okay. It's done. So that's, so on your note, it's been reduced by 5. Right?
Correct, yeah, I could go back to the 20.
Yep. Then we talked about a couple things last meeting, I think, was to, I think it was maybe the finance team was talking about retiring, retiring some of the, well, not retiring, but using some of the free cash to cover the debt for the dump truck along with the interest payment for that, which is around the 47 line.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't the dump truck, it was a $140,000 one. So the principal, principle on that was 47,000, and the interest, I think, was $980 if we used free cash to pay the interest also.
But that, that is the dump truck, yeah. That's the one we have for 47.
It's the smaller one, let me put it that way. It's not one of the bigger ones.
All right, well...
And when is it, when is it actually the debt retired? Is that one more year or two?
2024.
I do not have that in front of me.
24, John says. So that's the more logical one to try and...
Yeah.
And I think the finance's recommendation was to repeat this in next year's budget as well.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah.
Well, is that going to obviate the need to go ahead and reduce all those ones in the bottom over to ARPA?
Yeah, we may not need to move all that stuff to ARPA. A lot of that can go back in. That was what I was wanting to see. If we took some of that free cash out and, you know, did the, did the truck and the interest out of free cash.
I would definitely support that because, you know, all those things need to be back in the operating budget, and I don't want to offload them and have to worry about it.
Yep.
So do we know if we can definitely do that, I think?
Well, that's what we're trying to get at. So at the, at the far end...
It's subject to town meeting vote, but...
Yeah, right. Let's scroll over. So what we, the one thing we've got to know that we, we don't have in ARPA, but we don't, we've got to, two things we've got to...
And I will have to write another article to do that, so...
Yeah, for MS4, we have a choice. We can either do that from free cash, maybe. If we look at this, for example, depending on the free cash, so we had 84,000, oh, I wrote it, 84,005 or something in free cash, there we go. So our, well, our total certified free cash was 33842. The percentage is off to capital and operating stabilization are there, OPEB. That left us 84,00510. So if we took the dump truck, or which truck ever it is, and the interest, and then stormwater is a possibility there, but we were over that. We do need 15,000 to match the Mass Trails grant, and that can't come from ARPA, it can't come from a federal source because it's a state grant.
Do we, do we know whether or not the corrected free cash certification has been filed with the state yet and updated?
I don't know. That was going to be another question. So remember the last finance, the meeting with FinCom, there were three items identified where the finance folks thought that there were three points that had to be rechecked and recertified. The 911, E911 grant, the indirect costs, and...
The meter, oh, meter fees.
The water meter, was that the one? There were three things that we thought were not correctly stated in and needed journal entries from what FinCom had come up with, and that would mean that this would have to go back and get a recertification of free cash. We haven't done that.
Which I think, which I think would change that 338 upwards by 42 or 43,000.
Right. So we, Ed, were you in agreement that we need to look at that and do that, those readjustments?
Yeah, Bradley was working on the one for the communications grant, which is about, that's the biggest one, which is like 30,000.
No, no, we're talking about the, the certification of free cash.
He is too.
Oh, you are? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's quite all right.
Okay. I heard it.
Because it's a matching grant, so the police chief got the money through the grant, and you have to journal entry that.
Oh, I see, that one. Yeah, so the E911, that's the one you were working on, okay.
7,000.
But then there were two others that had to be shifted around with journal entries, and all three of those items identified by FinCom, I believe, is what needed to be recalculated and put back out for a recertification of the free cash. So we haven't completed that exercise yet, right? So...
Bradley, have you reached out to the chief and Lisa on that, at least on the E911?
E911, I haven't reached out at all.
Okay, would you please do that tomorrow?
All right.
And Lisa from Kinshere as well?
Yes.
Okay, so it was the water meters and was the indirect cost one? Was that the, was that it? There were three things.
How was the FRTA grant, drivers and indirect costs of recording the money?
Yeah, it was like $1,100 or... On the FRTA, through the COA.
Yeah.
Bradley, for the 911 grants, I have the numbers.
Right.
So fiscal year '21 versus for 30,799.31, 31 cents. And for the training and support, I submitted reimbursements of $3,402. And none of that was, that was all reimbursement, it was out of that.
Yeah, so it was those three things. So the E91 grant, the water meters, and the indirect costs were the three areas. So if we can get that figured out, that may give us a little bit more free cash to play with here. So anyway, we're at a choice where we're kind of stuck with the Mass Trails grant match. It does have to be somewhere there, free cash, or that's kind of it. We don't have the ability, from what I understand, Ed, and correct me if I'm wrong, to take that out of ARPA because it's a state grant, that 15,000.
That's my memory. I'm going to have to check on that because I know you can use them for one, but not the other, so I'll have to double-check to see which it is, the federal side or the state side.
Could I ask you a question about that? When, when the town recently approved the forestry plan for the conservation, having a revolving account for that, the intention of the funds was to improve trails. Could the $15,000 come out of the revolving?
Sorry, no, this is, this is for the bike path grant. So it's Mass Trails is the name of the program.
Oh, okay.
This is the Greenway, sorry.
Okay.
This is the $500,000 for the Greenway, of which we've already put up $110,000 of match, and we need 15,000 more. Sorry. Yeah, Mass Trails is the name of the grant program.
Okay, thank you.
But this is for the Greenway. So we have a choice.
Although reading brings, just jogged my memory, which is tough to do lately. Tomorrow, Bradley and I will have to go back in and take a look at the reports. I know somewhere along the line, I think there was like $13,000 left in a CPC fund for the Greenway, and we'd have to go back and see what that was approved for, but...
Oh, from way back when?
Maybe that's, maybe that's eligible to be used as part of that match.
From a long time ago.
Yeah, right, right.
That's true.
Yeah.
That is true.
Or a year ago.
No, more than, yeah.
More than that? No, because the bike trip, the bike...
It's been, it's been sitting there since before I got here.
Yeah.
Really?
There is some in that CPC category. I remember seeing that now that you say that. All right, well, that's worth looking at. But the choice we have, I guess, back on the MS4, right now, it's not in the budget anywhere. We need to cover it. So we can either cover it through free cash or ARPA, and I think the notion here was to try and cover it out of free cash if we could.
So step, can you scroll down a little bit, Bradley, please? We showed the free cash there, right? So you got the 338 and your percentage is there.
Yep.
So if, if we, if we're successful in adding the 35,000, right, in the reclassification, that puts our free cash at 373, 25% of which is available. That gets us down to 93,260. We need 91, so we just need to make that journal entry happen.
We need to make the, right, that recertification, yeah.
There's enough money in free cash to cover all four of those things.
That would be great if we could.
The other thing is if the Mass Trails is reduced by the 13,000.
Yeah.
Well, you better.
If that could be used, we don't know how, because this would be, this would be for design work.
Yeah.
That probably, when it was approved, would have been way back for acquisition or some other purpose, and so whether that can be reused, I don't know.
Be purposed.
Yeah, whether that's...
So I don't know if the easy solution is to say, we just assume we're going to get the 35, and in the event that we're not able to get the 35,000 added to our free cash, that I think the only thing on there is the MS4 just moves to ARPA.
Yeah, in the past one year, this has been added expensive, this at least close to $30,000 for the last three years, and they've been funded three different ways. Once it's been in the operating budget, once it's been operational stabilization, and then one other way. So we, is there a better fund to take it from than free cash?
You can go back and take it from operational stabilization again. The difference would be that if we were able to take it from free cash, it's a simple majority vote. If you take it from a stabilization account, it's a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Well, let's, let's leave those four things as probabilities for free cash with the assumption that we can work with Kinshere folks and take a look at those journal entries for those three areas and try to get a recertification of the free cash. That sound doable?
And so all those other things will be kept in the operating budget?
Right, so then if we take the, so neither the Mass Trails nor Stormwater is in the budget now, but if we go back to the two debt ones, those are in the budget right now, so we could take those out, right?
Yep.
You mean the 47 and the 980?
Yep, 930, yep. Yep, 930, yep.
Yep.
Those are in the budget, so those could move.
Yeah. I just, I just need Bradley to write me a note because, like I say now, I'll have to write an article for that to come from free cash.
Right. Okay. There'll be an article also for, for all those, right, from free cash, right?
You do have an article already written, Ed, just so you know, Article 28, Funding for MS4 Stormwater Management Permit Expenses. And it does say 28875 from free cash.
Yep. So that one's in there, but the match won't be for the trails and the debt.
Right.
Okay. So, where was that, Bradley? I'm sorry? Did you already take it out?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So you've taken it out of there now? Okay. All right. And then going back to look at the ARPA list.
What's the bottom line right now?
72.
How much?
72902.
So we haven't, I think all the things that we had talked about moving to ARPA are actually still in there. We haven't moved them yet. So if we're in agreement to not move them, that may not have any more impact. So the Sharps, mosquito.
The Sharps is in there, mosquito control all, yeah.
All of that. That's the 25557. If we leave all those alone and don't pull them out to ARPA, if, as long as they're already in the budget, so maybe just a quick double check, but we think they're all right in the budget still.
Yeah, just so you know, the 500 to the open space is new money.
Right, yeah, but I think we put it in there because we talked last time about.
Yeah.
Not doing it.
The access to town maps is still in there.
Yep. So those are.
I would rather not take them from ARPA.
Right. I think I would agree with that. And the reverse 911 as well. So I believe all of those are still in the main, main budget. You'd highlight them in purple or something today.
Reverse, reverse 911 is still in here.
Yep, okay. Now, okay, so we'll leave those, that's just information for us. But over on the right hand, again, there's a couple of things that we do need to consider. This is just a note for ARPA. So if we take out, so stormwater you could highlight because we may not put it there, right? That may be elsewhere. We don't want to double count it. But we have the Concom agent and the planning board expenses that are not currently in the budget that would need to go to ARPA, is what I'm remembering.
Yeah. Can we go back and just see the bottom line right now?
Yep.
On the budget. So 72, I know that's 72.
72, we were at 55-ish.
So I don't know.
We needed 55 for the.
Yeah, so could we just?
Sorry, getting like crazy. Sorry. Didn't realize.
Yeah, the 53526 plus even, if you just.
Yeah.
Add, you know, $800 to it or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
For what?
FICA.
Oh, right, right, right.
Do you want to just add a little bit of money for FICA in there?
Add 800.
Yeah, for FICA, about.
Yeah, just whatever your number is there for wages, you've just got to increase it by 1.45% tax. Now, I'm assuming the budget line item is pretty lean, generally speaking.
Is what?
Is lean, that there usually isn't.
So 1.45?
Yep.
That?
So it would be, no, it would be 0.0145.
1.45, yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
So now if we take the 54302 and reduce whatever our number is, I think you'll have, right?
So the one thing we haven't.
It's $18,000. So now 18, call it $18,000. If we go back to the wish list you were just looking at with Concom and.
Yep. Right around in there.
At least one of those things you go.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, to me, the consultant for planning board is going to be a consultant, a short-termer thing, whereas the conservation agent is going to be more long-term.
If we could fit a conservation agent.
I mean, they were just guessing on the amount, so I mean, this is, you know.
And I know planning board was a planning apply for ARPA funds for the consultation fees, and I think that makes more sense for the ARPA funds than putting it in the operational, yeah.
Yeah, it's more operational for Concom, I think.
We had that number grant from PBPC, I think it was $10,000 for conservation agents shared with East Hampton.
Yeah.
So that makes about sense.
Yeah. So I would favor putting the Concom agent back in, but at whatever amount is left, I guess, right?
Right. And I would also say, I would anticipate by the end of this week, our revenue projections are going to go up.
Will be higher, right.
Because the, at the very least, the unrestricted government state aid doubled.
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
That is true. I don't know how they make, how do they intend.
That'd be great.
Well, it might go up in the Senate budget side of the cherry sheets, but there's no guarantee that any of this will get adopted in the compromise.
I agree with you on that, but I also think, given all the press that's gone down with the massive surplus in tax collections, and now they're entertaining bakers' proposed tax cuts, that if they can, if they can build more of this into the budget, you know, it reduces the likelihood that they could actually give us tax decreases.
Is there any possibility, John, that with the increase coming to Norris, that they might fund the neurodiversity program?
Well, I think the plan on the 125 was to shift the Ursa funds, because the 125 has to be spent by next year. And we have Ursa funds, the 163, for the next two years that could be spent. We're spending them all next year. So we're going to, we're going to switch those two so that it's two years out before we have to come back, look for that.
Let's see anything.
Yeah, well, it was definitely not an ideal situation to spend them all in one year, but I give the school committee credit for doing that to lessen the impact.
Yep. But, so we would put that in there as the Concom wages then, right? And did that roll up?
I've been listening to it all day.
I'm not going to bring a pencil, Nick.
You want a pencil?
And also, let me please remind the select board that since you did revisit the extra hours on Friday for the finance team, that one of the Board of Health requests was for extra hours in the 23 budget also.
Yeah, I mentioned that tonight, and they're going to make a presentation about that. What, I don't know if it was included in this budget or not.
I mean, I.
It is not. It's in, it's in their wish list, which would be the tab too.
Yeah, it's in their other budget, but I, honestly, I mean, I see arguments for the, for the finance team. I don't know that I see it for the Board of Health personally, but.
I also, I also just want to say that the article in the paper today about the expanded health department in North Hampton, going to a community care is an incredible idea. And I think that we're already part of a regional agreement with North Hampton, and they have lots of nurses and other staff that I think we need to continue to explore that before we.
Options. Yeah, we may get some, some extra things out of there.
Shared services, right.
Services, right. Now, the one thing, go back on Bradley, on the ARPA page that we had, that other reduction page list there, so the one thing that we ignored, if you go back up, was the, the whole.
I wouldn't say we ignored it.
Well, we skipped over it. We skipped it, the whole, right, the reduction of the admin clerk. So we didn't, we don't.
So I, I get, I'm, I don't, I don't think, I can't support reducing hours in the position right now.
Yeah.
Potentially next year, when the treasurer is able to get in there five days a week and we see it. But I mean, right now, there's a six, there's a five-month backlog.
Wasn't that her recommendation?
Well, it was, but I kind of think it was, you know, a way to shift it and maybe take one for the team, but, you know, if they're able to, now, nothing prevents her, the department head, from not utilizing the full number of hours when they go to hire. But to take it out of the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So is this, that is currently in the budget, the 10128 is in there, we haven't touched it, right?
That was potential savings.
All right, so we're not, okay.
Right, and then, and I, and I concur with John because that was a proposal if it was a full day on Friday, so, but, you know, John's right, you know, maybe, maybe it's 25 hours or 22 hours rather than the 30. That still leaves it a benefit position, but, you know, let's, let's give it time to shake out because we don't know what we're going to actually gain with just a half a day on Friday. It's a step in the right direction, but it's not totally all the way there.
Right. Yeah, okay. So what we've agreed on though is it's, these things can, can leave, be in the budget, not take them out of ARPA. So the one thing that we've got left for ARPA is the planning board expenses, right?
Correct.
Let me check on one other, there's one other item I think we did take out. I just want to check on, let's see.
CPC.
We did take out the fire turnout gear.
We did?
You took it out already?
Yes, it was out.
Yep.
How did we lose it on the ARPA page?
Why is it?
It's not there, is it?
No.
No.
Was that going to ARPA?
I believe it was on here and then we deleted it off.
Why? Is it in the original budget?
That was grant money or ARPA? Question mark, and it was taken out of the budget.
All right, let's go back.
I think we should put it back in.
Yeah, let's go back and look at all these things where we had notes, just to be sure that we're not overlooking something here.
That's $12,000.
Yep.
Turnout gear, 12,000. Grant money, ARPA, it came out.
So we put that back in?
I think it was grant money, though.
Is it grant money?
One, I wrote, we have 12,000 in our budget, I wrote an additional grant for 12,000 because for SCBA models, which are $1,000 each.
Yeah.
So that's over and above what that account usually pays for.
Okay. So are you good to still do turnout gear with grant money then? Or ARPA money or whichever?
Only half is grant.
He wants the 12,000.
He wants the 12,000 back in.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can add it back.
Yes.
So if we put it back in, what does that do?
Here goes Concom.
Yeah. I know, I can't catch a break.
Well, we're not, we haven't shaken it out yet entirely.
I think we leave there as a placeholder and, I mean, not the turnout gear, but Concom and see how the revenue numbers come out.
Yeah.
42.
Can we go back and look at some of the other things? I mean, I think what worries me is vocational, you know? You said that was very, that was low, that doesn't allow for additional, or are we fine with that, do you think, Ed?
I think it's, that took that last adjustment of the almost $1,000 student increase. It's going to be tight.
Okay.
But you didn't, you didn't budget for all 50 kids or whatever we have, right? I mean, you normally, we do a couple less than.
62 or something like that? No, I did not budget for all of them going. If all of them actually do go, we have an issue.
Right.
Okay.
So we never budget the full amount of what we think are going, right, at this point? Because some drop out.
Yeah, we usually don't, right?
Yeah, some drop out, so we don't, we don't.
Right, some, some will apply and not go. Like I say, this was a bumper crop of applications for this freshman class.
Right, okay. All right, so let's just scroll down on our note side there, so maybe just that, you know, just see what we got there. So what's, what's that AR column? It's kind of in the way, can't see what's going on there, okay, so.
We can hide it.
Yeah. So we already did that 1,000, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we reduced the audit.
We can get rid of the, the maps.
So the audit was 36.
36.
Remember, this is year two.
Oh, this is year two, right, sorry, never mind.
Yeah, the audit, and this one would be for fiscal year '22, so it should be 31,000, I believe it is.
Yep, yep, it is, yep, my mistake, yep. Okay. So we're, forget the reduction ARPA for the maps, we're going to leave those alone. So the note can just go away.
We didn't reduce the wages.
So we didn't reduce that, right?
I believe.
Right? Is that where we landed on the town clerk? It doesn't seem right. Is that where we are?
Well, that's legal expenses. Town clerk?
Uh-uh. It's not going to fly.
So we didn't reduce open space, we left the 500.
Yeah, we, we put that back in, we're not taking it out of ARPA. And.
We reduced that by 3,000.
And we're leaving that in the budget too, so we're not taking out for.
Increase.
And that's gone.
So that's fighter.
Right. And that's back in there now.
That can move. Vocational, that's what we just discussed.
Yeah.
I do think, just since we're on schools there, line 121, I think that if negotiations conclude the way they're projected to, that number's going to stay, just the way it is.
Yeah, well, that'd be good.
We're not going to take the additional 15% increase.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to have to do something with the 132 line, right?
Right.
Yes.
But there's a, there's a placeholder over in that 54.
In that 54?
The $54,000 in wage adjustments.
Yeah.
So we've got to put.
Free cash on that one.
Yeah, that's free cash.
Well, actually, yeah.
Yeah, free cash on the stormwater, yeah. Okay. That's not there anyway.
So just that line, I mean, you were just looking, so, so I know we added 8,000 at special town meeting to go to 16, we have 15 in here. It's adding to it, but.
I remember I put it 16, then we changed it back to 15.
Okay.
Okay. And ARPA's, those two are staying in, okay. All right. That's gone, reduced, yep, okay.
PEB is staying. Free cash of, yeah.
And then, interest there, yeah, okay.
Procedurally, for the senior members of the committee.
Mm-hmm.
Meaning term of service on the committee.
Yes.
Yeah, we know.
Why are costs associated with the OPEB in the general operating budget if we have a fund set up to cover the cost? The audit expense for the OPEB actuarial.
That's a very good question.
I know, actually.
Ed, do you know that answer?
What's that?
If we, if we have a fund, a stabilization fund established for OPEB cost, right, then I'm just wondering why the OPEB actuarial study that is purely related to that is funded in the general fund. I assume it probably was initially because there was no fund set up.
And not from the funds that they not currently have.
Well, let's see, that was set up before I got here, but my assumption, which I shouldn't do, would be the fact that we're not putting enough away into the OPEB fund, so therefore, why would we take any money out of it to pay for those costs?
It's a future obligation for the next generation.
Okay, so we probably can't do anything there, most likely.
And the rest is debt, we just have the one thing that we're removing, right? Free cash.
Didn't we, at some point, I have in my head, that we talked about ambulance debt.
We already took it out.
We took it out? Okay.
Because the debt comes up after a period in time when we believe we can have a special town meeting to pull the money out of ambulance receipts.
We were gonna move it to later, okay, that's, yeah, because that was like 68,000, right?
And worst case, if there's not enough money in ambulance receipts, then we can go to the ambulance stabilization fund.
Right, so it's, yeah, okay, it's not there, okay, fine. So that is just a note for, that's for special town meeting sometime in the future?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Right, we would have to remember the first time, well, hopefully we only have one, but at the special town meeting that we put it back in.
Right.
So it's there in place to pay for the debt when it occurs in either late March or early April.
So just, just a note for the special town meeting or something, yeah, STM. Okay.
So can I just see the notes in the bottom, there were some notes written about this debt. We've got to pay down the Halloween Storm, it needs to transfer to special.
I think that's previous years.
Yeah.
Because Halloween Storm was 2011, right?
Yes, been paid off.
So those notes don't, makes some sense there, okay. All right.
Halloween Storm, yeah.
Yeah, so those notes, the school roof, we've already paid that, too? Need to transfer it?
There's an article on the warrant about this roof.
Is that the one, or is that previous?
And I think that was a previous...
That was a previous one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That goes back to the renovation in '05, I think.
Yes, I think those are, that was a new roof itself, wasn't it, or something? All right, okay, so we're, we're not there yet, but we're better. I mean, so what we're waiting on, then, I guess, is we need to get our recertification done on those three items, get the journal entries done, get that recertified, so we have hopefully a little bit of increase on the free cash. Then we're hoping, well, how soon we'll see anything about the state aid, if that'll come through sooner rather than later. I mean, we are today at May 10th, guys, and I was really hoping we could nail this, but we're not having a meeting right now, I mean, next, next Tuesday's election day on the 17th, so we were not having a meeting. Now, we had talked about, informally, we were gonna do a separate ARPA meeting, only ARPA meeting, and everybody, I think I heard from, maybe, I don't know if I heard you from you, Joy, but we were looking for the 18th, which would be Wednesday, just to look at the ARPA applications and not be bothered by all sorts of other agenda items, and really just focus on the ARPA applications on the 18th, given that the 17th is kinda out of whack.
It's a town election.
It's a town election, again. Well, then, yeah, yeah, it's out of whack. Okay, yes, town elections, and by the way, yes, thank, thank you, Ian, by the way, for putting up the new flashing signs about the town election, thank you.
Sure, we'll put the other one at the transfer station tomorrow morning.
That'd be great, no, I saw it when I drove by, it's great, I think, just to get the word out, so yes, everybody, town election next Tuesday from noon to 8 o'clock here at Town Hall, and you'll be divided into your two precincts for the first time ever. They were testing voting machines today, so hopefully all is well. So if we have the ARPA meeting on Wednesday, how late can we go before we finalize this budget, guys?
I did see that there was a planning board meeting for that night.
Is there for that night?
Yeah, in person.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to finalize it really next week.
Yeah.
Yes, we are all agreed that we're not gonna have anything to do with Memorial Day.
Right, we're trying not to.
You didn't even have to say it.
We are so trying, so trying not to.
Well, I'm, it's gonna happen.
Trying not to do that.
So Nick?
Yeah. Give me some ideas on...
Well, I was, I was distracted, are we meeting on the 18th or the 19th with ARPA?
I believe we said the 18th, but Joy was just mentioning, so we may have to meet upstairs because planning board may be here.
Okay. And we can't meet on Tuesday because that's the election, and the room's gonna be used unless we go upstairs.
Right.
Wednesday works for us.
Do we wanna, well, but I, if we thought we were just to really look at the budget without going through this level of detail and feel like we were ready to sign off on it, then that would be great, I just don't know, I mean, we've gotta get there at some point, but can we get there for the 18th? We don't know when the, how long the certification will take, although it might not take that much longer. It would seem to be a pretty quick turnaround from the first one to do the recertification and then figure out when the state aid is coming in, though.
Well, the state aid, I think, give it 48 hours and that, those documents will be updated on the DLS.
Ed, is it realistic for us to finalize the budget on the 18th?
Yeah, I expect that they'll probably be updated tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Could we, could we, yeah, go ahead, Reid.
Ed, do you think it's realistic to vote on the budget on the 18th of May, next Wednesday?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Let's do it.
All right, then we will...
Budget and ARPA.
We'll do the final vote on the budget and ARPA, then, on the 18th, okay?
What time on the 18th?
What's good, we do the 6 o'clock, is that okay for everybody?
It's fine.
All right, 6 o'clock on the 18th, and we'll start off with the budget and then go into the ARPA applications and see what we can get through. Okay, so that's where we are with that part, anyway. Good, all right, so we have, I think John has come in, so do we have, yeah, Robert, question, yes, go ahead, sorry.
Robert Floyd, College Highway Town Moderator, when are you going to review the articles?
That's gonna be the next question. When they get written, right, Ed?
Well, they're, we have a draft in front of us, right?
Well, of some, but, I mean, the language is not there.
Rather, when are you gonna sign off on the articles?
Yeah, well, that's the other thing. We have our, and next meeting is gonna be, after that was gonna be the 24th, is it?
And your meeting is the 20...
26.
26th.
Yeah, so we definitely need them by the 24th.
Yep.
And we have no choice but to have them by then. Right, Ed?
Correct.
Okay, so let's say the articles are 24th.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Sure.
Articles are 24th.
Do we have to review anything tonight on them?
No, I mean, there's nothing, I don't think there's much different than what we saw. We, now we've added a couple articles that we have to be sure on in terms of free cash, so we've just gotta go back and take a look at those. I mean, we'll get to that, if there's some things that you've noticed, by all means, we can do that.
Okay.
So right now, we'll, we'll set ourselves for the 18th and the 24th, okay?
Yep.
All right. All right, so that said, we, John, I know, has come in, so let's, can we give you 15 minutes at the most here?
Could I just ask one additional question about the dates and stuff?
Yes.
So we're, the 24th, we'll sign off on the warrants, and then the town meeting is two weeks after that? Do we anticipate needing another meeting after the 24th?
Not, not anticipating it, I mean, the, if we sign off on the warrant and we've got our budget done, I don't know why...
It's all our week, so I'm hoping not.
What do we do?
When are we doing the collective bargaining, the executive session? Or are we done trying to fit this in before the budget?
No, we need to, we definitely need an executive session on a couple things here, so that would be...
24?
Probably the, yeah, yeah, there's not much...
Can we do ARPA executive and the budget?
No, that's too much, I'm gonna say the 20...
24th?
Can we do the 24th for an executive, Ed, is that gonna be too late?
It'll be too late if you're voting on the budget on the 18th.
Right.
Well, we'll talk about that, I'll give you some thoughts.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so, and right now, then, yes, the town meeting is June 7th, so still set right now for Nora School at 7:00 PM, but we'll be consulting and talking with Board of Health to see if they have some thoughts about that, whether we have to think about outdoors versus indoors, then that means a whole nother set of logistics that we've got to plan for.
It almost means moving the date.
And it's gonna be tough, we may have to change the date.
Are you gonna have a meeting outside at 7:00 PM at night?
Well, yeah, no, we have to be, yeah, again, we've had our meetings on Saturday, so that's why I really don't wanna move the date on this town meeting again, I mean, I'm hoping that we can manage to be inside, we, anyway, I guess we'll have to take it one day at a time, because we know cases are rising around.
It's a good show, one day at a time.
I know. Getting older all the time. Okay, so we had a discussion in terms of the 2% for the EMS fire...
Yes.
Adjustment, and we made those adjustments, we thought, but, so let's see, we'll just talk about that for a few minutes and then we, hopefully we'll belabor it, but just to go through what we understand here.
Okay, yeah, I'd written, Bradley, just to try and get a sense of where it stood. Initially, there was an accounting error last year's budget because we never got the 2%. I gave it to the firefighters, but it was never added into the budget, so there needed to be a reckoning with the 2% from last year.
Can I just clarify that, you gave it to them, but it didn't get in the books, so they, what do you mean?
At town meeting, I said there's not 2% added onto my budget. Ed said it's, no worries, we'll have at it and figure out what we need.
Therefore, their current salaries don't reflect that.
No, their current salaries do reflect that.
Oh, they do?
Yes, but it was never added to the budget.
Okay.
So it just is, so it gets compounded this, this year, so it should be 2% that was added to last year's budget to be accountingly correct. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if, yeah, the budget should have been increased by 2%, and it was never.
For less, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we added mid-year the wages, wage increase, and then the 2% should be added on all of that, correct? And I guess my question is, was it done that way?
So when we did the mid-year adjustment, we didn't put in the 2% to make up for that? I thought we did.
No, the mid-year adjustment just brought, brought it up to where it should be mid, yeah, mid-year.
Okay.
So that was just kind of on its own.
Okay.
But then it needs to be added to the adjusted 2% from last year, and then the whole thing should be added with the 2% on that.
So we just increased the 25 and reflected it for the entire year, so initially, we, that wasn't clear, so Ed pointed it out, so we figured it was 25 times 2, but you're saying that there was no cost of living or 2% increase of all of FY '22?
In, yeah, in last, in this current fiscal year's budget, it was never reflected, that 2% was never reflected into my budget.
Okay.
So...
But you had the funds to go ahead and do the 2%?
Right.
Well, I did the 2% because everybody's doing the 2%.
With the open shifts. He had open shifts, so he had unscheduled weekstours.
So we, at town meeting, we'd put in the 25,000, was it, right?
Yes, and that was for the right sizing of wages.
Right, and that was for six months, and so we've put in now a full year's worth of that.
Yes.
It should be 20, 20 additional 2% on the 50,000 for this year, and then an additional 2% on the new wage amount.
And I'm sorry if I'm getting confused, because it's got, I guess the way I look at it is the, the base rate should be adjusted to have the 2% added to it from, from this, from this fiscal year.
Right.
The mid-year that we added to right-size wages should be added to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but for the full year, and then that whole number should add be 2%, so that they all get a 2% raise.
Right.
So what's in there, so, is the, I don't know where we are for FY '22, was the 2% added to the...
So if we, if, it might be easier if...
Just your totals?
No, Bradley, if you could skip over to the Fire Department tab.
Because, and for '22, those fire EMS were almost 50% each, yeah.
If we go over to '21 and '22 budgets, and scroll up, so there's two lines, the 231, 231, right, so 2021 budget matches 2022, so it doesn't look like there's a 2% there. But the 206 to the 220, right, if, you can add this up if you want, but I just did, 2021 wages cumulative for those two line items, $438,000. 2022, it looks like all the increase went into EMS, that's $452,000, which represents $13,856 increase, which is a 3% increase year over year, so it looks like the 2% is there.
But if you go back a year prior to that, I mean, that 2...
Back in '19?
Yeah, it's back in that 2020, it's, no, no, 2020, 2020 budget, down to EMS wages, it's 231, so the 222 budget is 220, so I'm still shy on that budget from 2020 wages.
I thought that was a finance committee recommendation.
Yeah, that was based on finance committee, and they're looking at the trend and what had actually been spent, was it not? I mean, what was actually being...
That was because we were taking reductions into budget, but the challenge is I got no place to cut budget, everything's, everything's expense accounts and...
I don't think anybody got their 4% restored.
Yeah, yeah, so...
That was across the board.
Well, I understand, so it got restored to the 220.
Right, I do, I didn't bring that.
But then, that, there was not a reflection of that in, in the current fiscal year budget, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna need to... So it should have, it should have reflected in FY 2022, the 225, 192, which is 2% because it had been adjusted...
So you're trying to recoup the cut from 2020?
I'm trying to recoup the accounting error, because it should have been, that 220 should have had 2% added to it.
For 2020.
Well, it has 3% added to it, the 206 and 220, 3%.
That was a restoration, and I forget all the detail that went, and I apologize, but the, it was a restoration of wages because there was such a big hit prior, because there was...
Trying to restore the cuts.
Yeah, and, but there was never, the, the 2% wasn't added to it.
So we just need to add 2% to the 2022 budget line, and then add 20% to the current one.
And then carry that over.
But we, but we did that. The last wage study that you gave us, you put all those wages right where you wanted them to be, and we didn't adjust anything, I mean, the only adjustment I remember making was the wording on paid holidays, so presumably that wage study that you just had us approve in February or March addressed all these issues.
It addressed the wages, it didn't address the budget.
But didn't you use that wage scale to determine what your numbers are for the budget?
I used that wage scale as comparison to other departments and where I could figure out a wage that was fair for Southampton. So it didn't address the budget.
So what, what methodology did you use to come up with what looks to be a 9% increase in wages?
For '23.
Correct.
So you get it on 23.
So the methodology was the, the right sizing adjustment to wages that was done mid-year.
That's the scale that we approved, yep.
The admitted accounting error was never factored in, so I'm just trying to do the accounting error effects, added to what was adjusted mid-year, and then put, and if we're giving, if you're giving a 2% raise to employees, then that, that number would then be 2% for this next fiscal year.
So your wage adjustment, what you were proposing the town to vote on for EMS wages, did not include...
The 2%.
2%.
Correct.
Well, they did, it didn't include the funding.
It didn't, it didn't, it didn't include fixing the accounting error in my, in my original budget. Does that make sense?
Well, not entirely.
The accounting error, though, I'm missing, what exactly was the accounting error?
So the accounting error was, the, all the budgets had gone up by 2%. I don't, I'd have to go back in notes to see why it was 220, but it should have been two, like 225, with 2%, it should be like 225, and it never got adjusted to 225 with the 2% increase that was given. And it never got adjusted to 225 with the 2% increase that was given.
So we're like $5,000 off?
Yeah, in that line item, and then there's another one for the, for the fire wages, so.
So I guess it wasn't clear to me that your proposal to the town did not include.
Fixing that account, yeah, didn't, no, correct, it didn't include that accounting error 2%.
And when was that additional 2% provided to the EMS staff? When was it provided to them?
When the town put it forth on town meeting, so I gave it to them, I'd asked Ed, he said, yes, you guys are going to get the 2%. You know, we're not leaving fire guys, the only one's not getting a 2%, so I gave it to them.
Back in '21, in '21.
Yeah, '21, yeah.
But dated back to July 1?
No, no, dated back to whenever it went into effect for everybody.
July 1?
Yeah, so for July 1, I'm sorry, yes.
So you used existing funds in your budget to pay a 2% increase?
Correct.
And you were able to do that because of open shifts?
Yeah, unfortunately, but yes.
And that was in '21, and then the '22 budget comes forward, and now we're in the '23 budget. And what happened in the late '22 budget is you got the extra $25,000 out of ambulance receipts for EMS wages. Right, that was in January, give or take.
Yeah, in '22 for the, for the pay increase for paramedics, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then we redid, you redid your entire pay scale.
For the, yes, for.
For everybody.
Yeah, well, not, well, not for everybody, but yes.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, close enough, yeah. And to me, so with paramedics, it was a little bit for EMTs and some for right sizing for.
Right, adjusting for minimum wage for probationary firefighters.
Few people that missed, but basically. Yeah, but it, but I didn't address the accounting error.
I'm with you on that. I just see them as two separate issues. But based on the pay scale that's approved and your staffing needs, there's, there's a direct correlation and calculation that says, in order to do this, I need X amount of money. So it's X amount of money, the cumulative 156 and 364 that you have in your, in budget 1, which is $520,000, rounding.
Yeah, that's a lot of numbers running around.
So that's, we're now, the total is like 512 or 515 or something, and what we just did at the two wage lines?
Like 520.
So I can tell you what we did, before you got here, what we did is we took last year's numbers.
Yep.
Or this current budget that you're in.
Yep.
Added $25,000 to it, then, because that happened at special town meeting. Then we increased that by 2%, and then we added the second $25,000 to EMS wages only. So the, and we put those numbers in, the difference between the numbers we came up with and what you have in the budget is our numbers are lower than yours by $8,500.
Okay, yeah, I mean, honestly, it's, it's hard to do.
On the fly, I know.
On the fly, and I do apologize because it would be a lot easier to sit almost, you know, with an accounting person and just, if I could figure it out with Bradley, just to, you know, sit down one-on-one, that would really be the easiest way, because I'm not trying to get anything more than everybody else is getting. And, but I'm just trying to make sure that we are getting what everybody else is getting.
Yeah, I think we should fix fiscal year '22, year 2% for, are the both lines, fire department waged and EMT waged?
Yeah, and fire EMS, yeah.
Both of them. We fixed that. It's the first thing we can do.
Yeah.
And we did that. That's in these numbers now.
We got to fix fiscal year '22. This is fiscal year '23. This is our.
Right, but if you remember, Bradley, we had you take '22's numbers, add the special appropriation of $25,000. That got us up to 477, and then increase that by 2%, which got us to 487. So we, the difference between '22 and '23, we put in the 2%. The 2% that the chief is looking for is some sort of error that happened in fiscal year '20, and he's looking to catch up on that.
'21, yeah.
Weren't you saying that you're going to go over budget for these two line items, or?
That certainly is the potential, and that's what I'm trying to avoid.
I think we should fix this now, so we have a month left, more than a month of fiscal year '22 that we need to fix this.
Yeah, and I, I think what he's saying is, sounds like what I'm trying to say as well, just to, which is if we fix the '22, the 2% for the '22, and then add the numbers and add 2% for the '23 budget.
Yeah, so, I mean, you.
I mean, it's challenging.
But it shouldn't be hard on, on, I mean, I, I would hear you if you're talking about truck maintenance or anything, other things like that, because they're not finite things, but, you know, you're supposed to have, in a perfect world, a paramedic and an EMT around the clock. So what's the mid-range cycle on your pay scale for those two spots, times 365 days, times all the hours? That, that's the number you need.
Yeah.
And we need the paperwork to show, to show that, and then whatever piece is going to be for fire, that may be this number, it may not be this number, but then we could sit here and have a discussion and map out a game plan on where to go.
I'd be more than happy to, to sit with you to do that. The challenges are, one, you would have to take a median number, so you could take a median number in past year, and then, and then fire throws it off, so for fire training, fire calls, you don't know if two people are going to show up or if 10 people are going to show up, that can throw a budget off dramatically.
Right, which is what I think the Finance Committee in the 2021 budget attempted to do, is look at your historical data, and that's where that, that cut comes in.
That cut came in because they asked me to cut, as they asked everyone to cut, a certain percentage out of their budget. So I cut that money out because I didn't know where else to take it. I couldn't take it from expenses because I need to buy medical supplies.
I think that was a different year. I mean, I can go back and see, but I think that the 4% was wage and expense from each department. That was the, that was the pandemic year.
Yeah, and it all came out of my wage account, all of it.
Yeah, maybe, I don't.
Which I know.
I just remember the, the FinCom, looking at, at trends of actual, actual spending.
At that time, that's.
And that was only a year ago.
And I'm digging through here, trying to find an expense report online, so I can see what we've actually spent in those categories this year. For some reason, I can't find them, needing to have an expense report.
Yeah, because that's what they were looking at, was actual expenses and saying, okay, if you didn't use that much, then we're going to reduce that budget line by X amount.
They gave me the choice of where to reduce it in my budget.
Okay, maybe. I don't remember them, okay.
Which, from your position, makes sense to take it, because that's the only line item that you can go get more, that's one of the only line items that you can get more money out of your receipts during the year.
Yeah, because if I can't buy medical supplies, it leaves me nowhere. I can't, you know, I need to run the office, and I need to pay for building. I had no place else to cut it but from there. And yes, it makes sense because that's the one place where I've got a cushion if I needed to.
So if we were back on the 2% or whatever, we had a higher figure in that, in those lines earlier. When you took the total of, before we started playing with it tonight.
$8,500, $8,516.
That's what the difference was?
We reduced.
Your budget by?
Year, budget 1 this year by that amount.
So we're, it would be, yeah, it was back up to around the 520 range.
Yeah.
Yeah, as the total of wages for EMS and fire, that total was 520.
Yeah, and the math that I did, and it's just hard to follow here, but the math that I did, that adds 2% in for this year, but it doesn't account for the 2% that.
Gotcha. So we've added one, one portion, we've added a 2% in there. We need another 2%, right? Added to what we have here.
I believe that's the position the chief is taking.
So if that were true, where does that get us to, how far off are we then?
Well, what year are you applying the 2%? Because it has a compounding effect.
Well, I mean, we, we thought we applied it.
If it really happened in fiscal year '21, so then you got to add the 2% to '21, then add it to '22, and.
Well, it should be added to the '22 budget where the shortfall was.
Yeah, no, '21 is the shortfall. You can see it right there. You went from 206.
That was the Finance Department decision.
That was, and that was restoring some, some money from, because it had to be restored. If you look at like the, on the fire wages, it's 231, 920, and that was FY '20 budget. In '21, it was 231, 90. There was a 2% increase. In '22, it's 231, 920. Finance realized that I was overspending wages, and I had to take it in '21 budget, all out of EMS wages, so I knocked it down to 206. Finance restored it to 220, but like the 231, 920 above, they never added the 2% increase that the rest of the town had gotten.
So it should be 236 and 225 for '22, and then add 10, 2% for '23, right?
Right, yeah, plus the wage increase that was voted mid-year.
And we've calculated, we need to have Finance Committee look at this.
Yeah, I'd love that, and I would, I would be happy to sit down with them, just because I think that's the best way to do it.
I don't know if they have a meeting planned, but.
Because we didn't ask them to come tonight. We thought we were done, close to done here, so.
I know you guys are working hard, and I hate to be the one up here making waves.
So how far off are we here? This changes a few things that we just.
Add the 2%, how do we adjust fiscal year '23 more?
And then you need to add in the mid-year.
You know, this, I mean, this really should be operational stabilization or something. I mean, I don't know that this is really adding money from a previous budget into this budget line. I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, I can see adding the 25%.
I'm sorry?
It wasn't the mid-year for EMT?
Yeah, mid-year was, yes, yes, was for EMS.
EMS.
Add $25,000 to EMS?
But that was.
Well, yeah, but that was for half a year, so this.
I'm looking at, he said a mid-year adjustment.
Yeah, because 25 was just for half the year.
I'm trying to understand that.
So there was, and for half a year, it was like 26, 208. So if we're doing a full year, it should be twice that, 50, 2, 4, 16.
I think, I think we leave it the way we had it before. It's an $8,500 issue that can be addressed through ambulance receipts after more time is given, and the documents and all that. It can be done and analyzed instead of.
And if that's how you want to do it, that's fine. I just want you to be aware that if it gets, if it gets overspent, I don't want to come back here in mid-year and say, I'm overspending my budget, and you guys saying, well, why, you know? As long as there's an awareness.
That would be good, because that means every shift is filled.
That would be, that's the goal, absolutely, that's the goal.
So Bradley, what you have in FY '23, does that give us our 520 or something there?
This is 2% of '22 plus $50,000 in EMS.
Okay, but if I may, so you got the 236 and the 225, then there was the mid-year increase.
Yeah.
And the mid-year increase was for EMS wages increase and, and holiday increase. So the mid-year increase was, for half a year, it was 26, 208, and for the holiday, it was 3,300. So if, yeah, yeah, so it should be, if we're going to do a full year, it should be two times the 26, 208, two times the 3,300, added to those base figures of FY '22. And then 2% on that.
Remove the $500.
Yeah, that's 328, 328.
Yeah, it's hard to do on a thing, I agree, and I'd be more than happy to sit with Bradley, Finance.
Honestly, I mean, I thought the purpose of having FinCom and us together was to have an understanding of everybody's budget. So somewhere, we're, we're not communicating well here to understand what the issues are.
Absolutely.
Because here we are beyond the hour.
And I didn't know what to do when I went to town meeting, and I saw the budget and saw that that 2% wasn't added. That's, and I'd approach that and say, what do you want me to do?
What do you mean it wasn't?
But we put in the 25.
To add it.
There was, an accountant would usually add it, so if you're adding, so in FY '22.
We didn't have an accountant.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, so anyway.
But I mean, I think that that's, that's where the, you know, the, the adjustment should have been made.
It should have been made in '22.
To do it now, like, a year later?
Yeah, but it's.
I mean, I'm wondering if there's a better place to make, that was what I, I totally agree with Rainey here. Is there not a better place to, whatever adjustment we have to make for something that didn't happen, can that not come out of some other stabilization account, rather than trying to put it in here retrospectively? Ed, you're, you're very quiet over there. Do you have any opinion on this?
Not a real good accounting procedure here.
If it was an accounting mistake, error, oversight, whatever we want to call it, we adjust it once and be done with it, but I don't, I don't, I don't know how we're going to find the money out of what we just did here, because this is getting already where it now.
You could use operational stabilization for that.
Well, that might be the choice then, but we have to understand what the amount is we're trying to figure out.
And I would, I would say that we, I sit with Bradley and Finance and whatever.
Then I think that's the plan for tomorrow.
Just to make sure that it's right, because I'd rather get it right this year while we have an accountant.
Not tonight.
Yeah, let's, let's make that happen tomorrow then, if you can, John.
No, that's, that's fine, so what would you like?
Try and figure that out.
Tomorrow?
Well, if Bradley's here tomorrow, if, you know, if you can try and figure a time that works, and you guys sit together and understand it so it can be explained to us.
Yes.
I'd be comfortable, I'd be more comfortable if the Finance Committee wants to decide where the money's coming from. They're going to have to prove the articles that are financial anyway and say they support it or not.
So once you, once you guys figure it out, I mean, and all three of you, I assume Ed will be in on it too, then, then it would need to go, I would suggest that it go to FinCom so that they take a look at it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it could be funded from different.
No, no, I agree with you, but this all has to be done prior to Wednesday?
Well, I mean.
I can do, I can work with Bradley tomorrow.
The 24th is the articles before next one.
Yeah, but the budget is.
Oh, I thought you wanted Finance to weigh in, the FinCom to weigh in before you vote the budget, which means.
We got to vote the budget, so, yes.
You got to get Vicki to hold an emergency meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we said we were going to vote the budget on the 17th, right?
18th.
18th, I'm sorry, 18th?
Yep, we're voting for you on the 17th.
Okay, all right, so the plan is, you guys work together tomorrow, see if you can make this clear and understandable. Right now, if that is what I'm seeing there, 241 and 318? That's 560?
Yeah, I think, I think the problem is that there's still the missing mid-year raise that happened in this fiscal year.
So we're already like $40,000 over what was in the budget for now. We had 520 in there.
Yeah, I mean, let's look at it. There's a lot of numbers floating around.
I know.
Okay.
But now we're like 560. So that's where I'm not understanding it, so we have to, we need to understand exactly what is coming from where. I mean, whatever is being adjusted at what year, but I, whatever past adjustment has to happen to rectify something, I would say we try to take it out of stabilization.
Yeah, so I'll do whatever is necessary, Bradley and Finance.
Okay, well, let's leave it at that, and so you guys can work together and figure out a time to get together tomorrow with your schedule and see what works.
And I'm sorry, because I know it's the end of a long night for all you folks.
We'll try and accommodate, but I, you know, no promises here. We'll see how close we can get, but this may have to be a partial step here.
Yeah.
Because we.
And as John said, if, you know, if there's a shortfall mid-year, there is stopgap for, for ambulance wages out of receipts, so, you know, I don't know how the, I know it's a tough job to balance budgets, so.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in and trying to explain this, and we'll see what we can understand from this after you guys.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Work together, okay?
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, so we didn't put that new one in there yet, right? You haven't put that in the master sheet, I mean, the new figure there, in FY '23?
Want to put these new ones?
Well, I just want to see, what's our bottom line? What does that do to us?
Are we adding a 2%? I thought we already did.
Well, that's what's not clear. Right now, the bottom line.
We have to go year by year.
I know. I mean, how far apart are we currently?
What are we changing right now?
Partner wages and EMT wages.
And how is it being changed from what we had?
Well, or we can just wait until you guys meet tomorrow. I mean, maybe that's better, to be clear.
Well, yeah, I guess to be clear, yes, they should meet, yes, they should come up with a number. That budget number should not change from, from what we had it, and that can be the first thing we can talk about on Wednesday.
$50,000 plus a 2% raise.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So we had one 2% raise already in there. We're missing maybe a 2% raise and maybe some.
From a previous fiscal year.
On a previous fiscal year.
Current fiscal year, yeah.
And some other mid-year adjustment thing, okay?
Okay.
All right, go, just go back to the cover page, and where, where did we end up with our final numbers on the budget?
I haven't adjusted the fire and EMT.
Well, yeah, okay.
You want me to?
I think, no, I think we were saying, well.
We're going to leave it as it is until he talks to the Finance Committee.
Until you guys talk, to just see where we are right now, so we're at 42, okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, are we done with this for tonight, as far as we can go with this? I don't know that we can push this much further.
Motion to adjourn.
Good try, good try, good try.
I do have a question about the article.
Let me just check and see what else we got. Yes, Rainey, question, go ahead.
Is that what we're up to, though?
I think we're, I think we've covered all the budget-related items. We were up to articles, yeah.
We're up to articles. I just had a question about the. I just had a question about the cemetery water line. I got all the correspondence, I read all the information, a sad story about the whole thing. But wasn't it originally funded by CPC?
No.
No?
No.
The original money that came in was 9,000 something? That was from capital?
9,700 last year.
9,700 from capital.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And this is just to go on top of what's already there, because they didn't have enough...
Somehow their day was historical or something.
No, 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 that I, I'm pretty sure that one wouldn't have flown. Now, just looking at a couple of things we were talking about with free cash. We have the MS4 already as an article on here.
For free cash.
And for free cash, and we've got free cash, we've got 20,000 for the mass trails, so that's fine. And we, that's probably down to 15 rather than 20, but, and so those, and there's one more, was the truck debt, right? So that's the article we need, is the free cash for, that's not on here, right?
I thought that was, I saw it.
Correct.
It's not there? Okay.
Okay, all right. I think that's...
That's the 47 plus the...
The 47 plus the...
$900 for interest.
Right. Otherwise, 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 I think everything else, is there anything that we've talked about that we? I think we've got all that on there.
Are we going to go over some of the articles in language or no?
I mean, we've got a few. If we had questions, there's a couple that had been drafted. I know we tried to look at the bylaw committee ones in particular, where I can find the right pages. If I can find the pages. So why don't we just take a look at what's here? There's many more that need drafting, but...
So the bylaw starts on page, you start on the first page.
I have a question on Article 2 when you get there.
Okay. Okay, so just on the, the first one to the general government, this was to change that one, one thing about the length of contracts. That's all that was. So all we're doing is recommending the change of that section in the article. So maybe in the, up top, I'm wondering in the, in the article, to see if the town will vote to change the town bylaws, Article 7, Section 2, maybe we have to add in Section 2, just to note that. But that's all that one was. So on Article 2, this was to have some language modified to the town treasury, because all it said before was, "The treasure collector no longer is allowed to retain fees, returning all fees to the town treasury effective May 1, 1987." So that's what our current bylaw says. So this proposed change was, "All town officers will be required to pay all fees received by them by virtue of their office into the town treasury within the fiscal year in which the funds are received."
So what's being struck out there is the fact that the elected collector used to be able to retain collectors' fees and going on salary. So that's fine, that doesn't apply anymore. But the proposed change, I feel, is too broad. So Mass General Law spells out when funds are supposed to be turned over. Absolutely within the same fiscal year, but in reality, they have 14 days until the next year to turn it over, because the books are still open. But if we're going to put this on the books, well, then they should be turning funds over within a weekly basis, or a monthly, or whatever the case may be. Other municipalities have it that you have to turn it over at least monthly and/or any time it exceeds $500.
Isn't that a policy as opposed to a bylaw? The bylaw's requiring...
Well, Mass General Law already says you have to do this. And so now we're putting a bylaw in.
So we don't need it. Well, I mean, this is all gone by the attorneys, and they didn't come up with what you're saying.
This was their, their suggestions. They didn't give us any more detail than that. Interesting. But if you, if I'm hearing you say that, "by virtue of their office into the town treasury..."
It'll be the town clerk, the building commissioner, the board of health.
Yeah, anybody who could...
On July 1st, they could collect a payment, stick it in their desk, and let it sit there June 30th, and if they turn it in, they're turning it in. But technically, it's a check, and if it's from a company, it's going to have 180-day expiration on it.
Sure, yep.
But they're in compliance with the rule.
So you could say something like...
Within so many days of having received it.
Yeah.
Or without delay. Turn it over, don't sit on it.
Yeah, well, delay can be arbitrary, too, maybe. So, I mean, within, if two weeks is the general turnaround, you think? Or 30 days, or, I don't know. Ed, any thoughts on that, in terms of when receipts should be turned in?
At least monthly?
Please?
We have a policy for that. I think it belongs in the policy rather than the bylaw.
Okay.
Strike it then. Right, then we can remove Article 2 altogether.
Then, well, we have to vote to delete the bylaw.
Then we'd have to, yeah, vote to delete Article 2.
And the reason would be because we have an existing policy already in place.
So what, what does the existing policy say? Is it like the two-week turnaround? I mean, the issue is that it's, it's all got to be done within the fiscal year, right? Still?
Yeah.
The policy hopefully says that.
I don't know if the policy says that. It gives the time limits to turn over cash and checks.
Yeah. So if that is in the policy, then this bylaw still is, I mean, our recommendation early on to lawyers was to delete it. They came back and said, "Don't delete it. This should be changed to..."
Right, well, well, don't forget, this policy, this bylaw is for elected officials. You could argue that a policy doesn't have to be followed by elected officials. Policy is basically for everyone. So this is specifically for elected officials.
So we're talking about two elected officials that we have.
Okay, so, I mean, how would one know that it's specifically for elected officials? We have one now, but the bylaw doesn't specifically mention anything about that.
Right.
No, I thought it did.
Huh?
I thought it did from what you had read.
No.
No. The old...
The initial, yeah.
The current one is, "The treasure collector is no longer allowed to retain fees, returning all fees to the town treasury."
Right. Which changes the status of an elected official, which requires the vote of the community to put that bylaw in place.
Well, what do we think?
We have a policy in place.
So we don't need the bylaw? Well, if legal will agree with that.
I thought it was, I thought it was town council's recommendation to keep the bylaw.
It is, and, and this is the wording that they gave us, I believe. That was their issue.
Correct.
So they may not know that we have a policy, but...
Because it was specific to the, yes, to the treasure collector. They realized that others also collect money. So it became a very generic reference.
So it's articles to the town treasury, it's not specific to the treasure collector itself.
Right.
I don't know, this was their recommendation was to keep it. We, our recommendation originally had been to delete it. And they...
Yeah, I mean, if they're recommending to keep it, I think there's a rational reason to keep it.
All right, we'll go back, how about, we'll go back and take a look at their email and just see what they said, okay?
That's fine.
We'll come back on that one. All right, the other two on the deletions were the solid waste landfill, just because the landfill...
We don't have one.
Technically doesn't exist anymore. And there would be, Ed, just a note on Article 4, there would be, the language on Article 4 is missing here to have a strike through. I think I might have sent it to you, but it's not on this Article 4 that you've put out here tonight.
Okay, that was copied straight from what I received.
Yeah, I'll check.
Copy and paste it.
Yeah, okay. So there would be language of what the current bylaw is, which again is probably a sentence or two.
So we need...
And a strike through. Okay, so we'll, we'll verify that and get you the correct stuff.
Thank you.
The soliciting prohibited bylaw, this had the strike through here, and that is going to be...
Replaced by...
Replaced. Deleting existing language with a strike through and adding new language shown in bold-faced text. And this is the whole bylaw. And again, they made several comments on this, and we'll just have to go through, and it doesn't need to be, for some reason, it's all in bold, maybe the way it got sent, but...
Could be.
It doesn't need to be bold, but it should be all the same font, which it isn't.
Yep.
Some of their font script in here that, we can go back and clean those up a little bit, too, then. I can help do that.
And just to add that all of this was gone over...
Yep.
In detail and supported totally by the police chief, because they're the ones who deal with all the complaints with this. So we address the issues that were identified, the situations in which they find themselves. And, and citizens as well, because we had a meeting, a public meeting in which people came and contributed to this, and they did online as well. So we did have a number of sources of input into this document.
Yep. So anyway, so just some, some more of the formatting in terms of bold face and font here, but I think we have to have the bold face, because that's all the new language. So that's the reason it was bold, but we'll just check on fonts and stuff. So that was one. And then Article 6, and I guess, you know, we, you don't normally start with bylaws at the beginning, so we didn't know which articles you wanted to number these at. That's why that article...
Yeah, it's just, it's just in there as a draft, they can be moved around.
Right, yeah. But that's why the article question mark is there, so maybe I could...
Right.
Eliminate that, too. The numbering of buildings, so this was again the bylaw that was modified based on the things that Francine just said.
And, and the building inspector.
Right.
And, and fire. I mean, everybody's concerned about public safety, and this is one way of...
Right.
Getting resources to homes quickly.
Okay. And then the next article was the, was a new article. So the question here is to accept a new town bylaw, which is the naming of public buildings, structures, bridges, and public lands. And that was reflective of all the comments, too, from legal. And that's how that has ended up. So this is the only one that's a brand-new bylaw, the others would be amendments. The transfer from free cash, so this is gonna, we'll just have to double-check those figures, because those may have...
Based on tonight.
Changed, although right now, right now, it's 118,000 to capital stabilization, 101 to operating, and 33,000 OPEB. Those were the figures that we had coming into tonight's meeting, and that hasn't changed from those perspectives yet, unless we do something now with fire, maybe, to go back on stabilization.
Won't the percentages change, though, if we have a higher free cash amount?
That too, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And the money will change, yep.
Yep, so, so that's true. Unpaid bills previous fiscal year, you have some, we don't know exactly what those are?
Well, I cheated on the ones where I didn't have an electronic copy rather than writing them out, so I believe there's 11 of them.
Okay, all right. Anyway, was there any, I mean, I don't think we need to go through, there's no real solid language. We've got to go through them all and vote them at some point in time, but is there anything that anybody's questioning on here?
Well, we, I think John had made a recommendation for the ones at the end, and I just would like to hear a little bit more about what the article will sound like. I mean, I know that, it's easy to understand about the, we already talked about the PEG on '24, but '25 and '26, if we could just say another word or two about that, and also '30.
Mm-hmm, yep. So '30, I can, I can mention just briefly. This is the vote to establish a municipal light plant. So this is just one step, an early step in a procedure, to allow us to pursue the idea of looking at broadband fiber to home, okay? What we have been told by various communities and two vendors that have come in is that the town needs to establish themselves as a municipal light plant in order to manage the broadband utility, per se, I guess. And that vote has to be done in two separate fiscal years, it requires two town votes. We've got conflicting information, where I believe legal counsel has said that they don't think that's necessary any longer, but we were in a position where we, if we decide to pursue this idea of broadband with ARPA funding and other infrastructure funding, we didn't want to get caught, we being, I'm speaking as a tech committee person now, didn't want to get caught behind the eight ball in having missed a fiscal year, a town meeting vote.
Fiscal year '22.
And if, you know, this is just to get the ball rolling. It commits nothing, it's just to say, "Yes, we, we want you to explore this." And then there would have to be a second vote in theoretically another fiscal year to really allow it to happen before anything could really happen. So that's, and it's, it will be more explained, obviously, and we had some language there for that. So, John, can you talk about the other couple there? You'd raised those two, the home rule legislation and the charter commission?
Right, so just on the MLP, though, we don't have that language yet, do we?
I had, I had given it some draft, Kim Florak had drafted some.
I got some draft language for it.
Yeah, Kim Florak had sent some stuff on to Ed, I believe. Yeah.
So we'll get that prior to next week's meeting to look at?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that was pretty much there, so we'll, and so I think, Ed, right, normally what we'll see when you do these, right, just for the new folks here, we'll have the article, then you'll have, there'll be the motion, and then there'll be the summary that talks about what the article's all about, right? In English?
No. The first version will just be the article, so that's what you'll have to sign for posting.
Right, okay.
And then from there, we develop the summary and the actual motion.
Okay, all right.
And then that will actually, and that version will actually have the finance committee recommendations on it.
Okay.
So the one that's in the packet that says Article 25, home rule legislation for additional package store licenses, right now I believe the town is limited to three package store licenses, and we, I was, I was approached by a business owner in town, Puzas, and asked to support a home rule petition to acquire at least one additional package store license that they could apply for, so that they could expand their offerings within their existing footprint. So I said I'd be more than happy to bring that forward. It has to go through the vote process of the town, and once the town votes for it, then it goes on Representative Peace.
Right.
To get it approved in Boston.
Okay.
So that's what that one is.
Can I just ask, then, in a case like this, can any town just decide, are there parameters based on population, or size, or anything, or is it just?
That's how we have the three. So your, the number of liquor stores is based on your population, so as the population grows, it would go up.
Right.
But if you want to go around that, then, or beyond that, you can do it through a home rule petition, which is why, like, North Hampton has, like, 70 of them.
Okay, so you can theoretically ask for legislation to do as many as you want.
And as long as the citizens vote for it.
Yeah.
Then it'll get rubber stamped through the State House.
And then we do also have a host agreement that says that the number of, I don't know if it's a host agreement, but cannabis stores are based on 50% of the liquor, so that would then change the cannabis situation.
Right.
Right.
Potentially.
Right.
You could have perhaps more, if we had one more.
Okay. And then the other one?
So the other one is the former Charter Commission under Mass General Law, which I sent off to Ed, but that one is, you would elect, I'm going off the memory here, the town would, if the town opted to do that, it would then elect X number of citizens to serve on the commission, which would evaluate our charter. My specific hope would be is that they would look at the 2016 recommendations that came out, and some of them have already been implemented, but it would be a time to just, do we need to do a piecemeal again and modify the charter, or do we do a whole section and then send it back to the voters for action?
Mm-hmm.
But it gives us, in theory, all of next year to go through that process with a separate elected body of the town to do it, Charter Commission.
Right, okay. And then Article 31 is about the septic betterment, and what we originally were told now changed to be the tune of additional 1 million. Are we still, I imagine we're just going to have to vote to whether or not we agree with that, but there's no funding behind it, right?
No, there's no funding behind it.
So what are we voting on, then?
Actually, establishing a new septic betterment program.
Yeah.
You need that vote to go forward and do that.
And allow, but didn't we do that, allowing the?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the Hampden Plan thing. This is for the Board of Health.
This is the Board of Health one, where they would go out for the 200,000, right?
And I think the only new thing in this is that they're charging 5% interest.
Right, but also, at least the two questions that I had in my mind that I posed is, what happened to the original $100,000 grant that was given to us?
Yeah.
And show me the Mass General Law language that says all interest can go back to the department to be spent as they see fit, because my understanding is, is that that interest is to be, is to be re-loaned out again and added to the additional $100,000, the initial $100,000 that we received, probably 10 years ago.
Yeah, okay.
I did raise the question at the Board of Health about accounting, you know, how can they account for the original 100,000? And they were going to look into it, because none of them were there at the time, and that was even.
Yeah, I've been, I've been told there was no initial $100,000, so we'll have, we'll have to look into it further.
Yeah.
Hmm, okay.
But your, but your other point about the utilization of the interest, the way it is worded, it just says, at the discretion of the Board of Health, as opposed to going back into this program.
Correct. I think the money, I think by statute, the money's restricted and has to go back into the program.
Would make sense if it did.
But.
Okay. We don't know either way how it's handled?
No, those are questions I posed last time we talked about that. I assume someone's going to get back to us before we have to vote on it.
Yes.
So before we have a vote on the, on the articles, we need to get that clarified a little bit, okay?
All right, I will, I will give Kate Lynn a call.
Yeah.
About the interest.
Yeah.
The use of the interest. And Ed, you're going to do something with the 100,000s?
Try to see if you can.
Yeah, like I say, I've been told there was no initial $100,000 grant, but I'll see what I can find any further than that.
Okay.
All right.
All right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, and then I think the other one, revolving fund, revolving fund, spending limits. We had some questions on those last week. I think, John, you also wanted to see some justification, didn't you, for the increase on, we talked about one of them for the.
Forestry?
Forestry, conservation forestry, I think we resolved that one.
Yeah.
And what was the other one?
The other one was the burning permits.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, going from, what, 5 to 20,000?
Five to 20 on the burning permits, yeah, so that would be.
I know on the finance side, his intent, what that money is, to utilize that money to make up for the gap funding for the.
Okay.
Not the slant, but, yeah.
Yeah, that might be it, okay. All right, so I think that's, that's generally where we are with the, with the articles. Well, we will take a, take a bit of clarification on a couple of things that we've talked about tonight, and a couple on the bylaws in particular, and come back with that clarity for when we need to.
Yeah.
Have a vote on them.
You know, I just, you know, it just occurred to me that, I mean, for a one-time purchase, it seems kind of strange to be increasing a revolving account, as opposed to, like, the forestry, where they're going to be having this ongoing situation where they're going to put it into trail maintenance.
Yeah.
It just does seem like it's an odd, you know, ongoing plan.
Right, I don't know. If that's, yeah, I don't know where else they would want to take it, but it, I agree with it as a little.
That's more of a capital, or, you know, some other kind of.
Yeah, they didn't go to capital on that, did they? Or they did, they did? And that's, that's one of the ones that didn't make the cut.
Yeah, it wasn't scored as high.
Right, okay, all right, all right. All right, where are we here in terms of agenda? I think we're just about through where we need to be for tonight on this.
No PCF, you know.
No personal, yeah, no personal, personnel change forms, licenses, permits, no minutes to approve, we need to catch up with Kathy, Ed, and find out where we are with minutes and so forth. We seem to be pretty behind, are we not?
Yeah, she's, she's got some, she's almost done with.
Okay, all righty. So then, just a note on calendar and announcements, just to jump down, we've got that other meeting on the, the 18th, just to note that, our ARPA and budget meeting, okay? And I think that's about it, unless there's anything on the pending items, I'm assuming there's probably nothing yet on pending. And we were going.
No.
To have an executive session tonight, but I personally feel like, without you here, Ed, to walk us through a few things, that we could maybe push this one off and try to do this, you know, you said you had some ideas of how we could deal with a couple of these things, so maybe you can give us an idea of what you're thinking about, a date we needed to talk about these, or if we have to. I'd rather not add it on to the ARPA meeting if we don't have to.
Okay.
Okay. So if we do not have an executive session, if anybody have any other business, if not?
I just want to ask about this ARPA meeting, since it's our next meeting.
Yeah.
I don't want to put a lot of work on anybody that, you know, I mean, but are we just going to be looking at lengthy applications? Are we going to have a chart where we can look at dollar amounts, you know, like, what's the point?
There is, Judy's been keeping a chart of all the proposals coming in, so we have a spreadsheet of what's come in, what its title is, who's proposed it, what the amount requested is.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
I'm going to be trying to tackle the notion of seeing if it makes any sense to use the treasury codes to try and allocate those like the Hoyok folks showed us.
Yeah, okay.
We'll see if I get that far or not.
Okay, that'd be great.
To Randy's point, is it possible for that packet to be available to us on Friday?
It's Friday.
So that, well, if we're going to meet on Wednesday, I mean, it just, it gives me the weekend to read.
Have a long, have a long car ride, that'd be great to.
You can try. Yeah, I mean, a lot of these are ones, right, there may be a few new ones, but we had them at one point before.
Well, yeah, and I have the, you know, so even, even if there's any new ones that have come in that we haven't gotten the copies of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you want, you want copies, though, of the, of the ones, not, not just email, you want.
Oh, I don't mind emailing it, actually, before that.
And I'm fine with the PDF, too, I just, I can do the bulk of my reading on the weekend.
Yeah.
Get into the workdays, and I'm just, I'll be reading it as we sit through the meeting.
Okay. Well.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn them.
Second, aye.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.